All right, it's two o'clock. We're gonna call the town council meeting for December tenth to order. Planning commission decisions. They had an interesting conversation. About our. About our conversation, sorry Helen. All right legislative review. An ordinance approving four leases at the EGV Community Center.
Mayor Owens and Breckenridge Town Council before you is a second reading for. An ordinance approving four leases at the Breckan, Breckenridge Grand Vacations Community Center. We did discuss this in the first go around and council asked us to evaluate other leases across the town that the town that the town kind of oversees. With the exception of the Breckenridge Professional Building, which is its own kind of separate. You know, location, but we did look at the rest of those and the majority of the leases that we have are really with Rec Create. For the facilities that comprise the. The Arts Campus. So if you're all right with that, we weren't going to bring back a big long spreadsheet that shows you all those, but the these four plus the one you see next, which is there for first reading. Regarding the game and cabin, those are the primary ones that I would say are kind of in a market level. So. That we've that we've done and the rates are generally been negotiated. One on one for each of these. And if you notice, these are a lot of these are renewals. Three of the four that we're considering now. Are renewals of a 10 year lease. And so we've just used those terms and continue with those same terms going forward. The fourth one is the recently vacated treetop space, which as we've discussed. Will be used by Summit County Libraries for a reading space. I think they're calling it the understory in a place where they can have. Public reading sessions and that kind of stuff. So.
Okay, so not admin.
No. Yeah, I know. I was excited.
Correct. So before you is for second reading is the ordinance approving these four leases. Again, a 10 year term on all four of those and. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Any questions on these? Feel good about it? All right. And then did you have anything to add about the game and cabin lease?
Nothing more that's really been mentioned in the in the memo. Really, this is for Summit County CTC Summit County Telecommunications Consortium. They were displaced based on the. The demolition of the Schoonover Building and have recently relocated into the game and cabin. I think it's three oh nine North Main. So.
The only thing I'll add is they were not paying rent at Schoonover. And when this deal was negotiated with them. Earlier, much earlier this year. We set that. Lease payer rent payment at a thousand dollars and that's paid by the consortium. So all of the. Entities in the county that are receiving peg fees from cable put into that and then the rent will get paid out of that. So we'll have a small piece of that expenditure.
And we pay utilities on that one too. They do. Yeah.
No, I don't believe so. I don't believe should be. Take a look at it, but I don't. I think they're paying their own utilities.
Okay. I don't remember. Any other questions on that one? Everyone okay with that? All right, moving on to the 2024 budget appropriation.
Your oil day still wearing that coat? New coat.
Anything else? Maybe I need to switch brands.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. In front of you are the 2024 final appropriations, but rather than go through the ins and outs and the numbers that you have in front of you. I just kind of wanted to talk through the process of how we get here. So after close of October and November. We do the analysis to consider. Funds are needed to get us through the rest of the year. So we keep the books open until January 31st. For the year in closing. So we consider. Expenses that have not hit yet. And it really falls into a couple of different categories. The first one is where we may have some unplanned expenses. So for example, we had. An extra 10,000 for a grant that was given out. That as soon as we go $1 over the total expenditures within a fund means that we have to go for an appropriation. So you have examples of that. Other examples are where we bring expenses forward. So you have an example in the housing fund. We have 1.5 million for stables infrastructure that was planned to be spent 25. We've actually brought it forward to 2024 so that requires a need to go for an appropriation. And then when we look at all of the impacts that we have transfers that go between one fund and the other, some of it may be to. Keep the fund balance positive and other ones are where we have projects that have been introduced. So an example of that is within the sustainability. We decided to build the e-delivery. Structure. So there's a transfer between sustainability to capital because the capital funds are the ones who are actually going to be. Covering those expenses. So it kind of falls into three different areas. But ultimately it all rolls up to the requested appropriation of the memo that's in front of you. Open for questions.
Thanks Tracy. Any questions? I was just curious what the the note in there was increased salary for marijuana, I think, or in something like that. Can you just tell me what that's about?
The the staff member that lives within that fund had a pay increase and there was a. Additional funds granted to that employee too that took us above. The planned expense for personnel costs.
Okay. Nothing else? All right. Thank you very much. Right. Colorado Department of Parks and Wildlife State. Oh, sorry. So this one, did you want to update us on it?
I would just say that we've pulled this item from the agenda. We have some additional work need to do and then we'll bring something back to you on another day.
Perfect. Okay, managers report. I see Shannon coming down for public projects update. There's no packet, but. Think she's here for questions. Do you have anything you wanted to tell us?
I don't, but I can take questions.
No, seems like you're doing a really good job.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to mobility.
No mobility update. We do have staff here to answer any question if you have them.
Any questions?
They're doing a great job.
They're also doing a great job and they have their donut morning.
We did. Yeah.
It was great. The donuts were excellent. Okay. Sustainability update.
Mayor and Council, nothing to add beyond what was in your update in your packet, but available for any questions.
Thank you, Teddy. I really loved sledder kit. I thought that really made the packet. Any questions for Teddy?
Just their comment on the e-delivery that it is going really, really well. They presented and presented to the Restaurant Association last. What's that Wednesday? And there was a lot of compliments and the only criticism is that. One of the restaurants had to help push out one of the carts out of a. Snow area after they unloaded their whole load. The cart was lighter and stuff. And that that was it, which is I called that like the win.
Was it well attended? Were there certain people that were against it before? Have they come on board?
Absolutely.
Awesome.
So there's. And you know, they're up to I believe eight distributors at the moment that they are. They're nice see through the holidays and. And then looking to onboard more come mid-January. So.
And fast.
Amazing. Really happy to hear it. Really, really happy to hear.
On top of that, they are. Looking into and kind of working with sustainability to figure out if they can just start to bite off a little bit of. Either cardboard or grease or compost wherever the biggest pinch point is, they're looking just to kind of. On this pilot program, just to pick up maybe a couple of accounts. On one, one of those waste streams to get some proof of concept. So I thought that was pretty exciting.
That's really exciting.
I love that.
Okay. Well done, Teddy.
Didn't even have to say anything.
All right. Did we have anything for housing? I know there's nothing in the packet, but not sure if we needed an update or if there are questions from council.
They've been busy.
Yeah. That's it.
See their draft blueprint update, which I expect will be bringing back to you guys here sometime soon.
You mean like a five year, the five year or whatever?
Yeah, how with the progress we're making on that.
Great. All right. And same for open space, no packet, but if there are questions, I do see. Nope. All right. Moving on, no committee reports, Breck Events Committee. John. I know we're really flying through. I'll just. I'll just burn some time up by saying that that was really fun. The lighting was really fun.
Yeah, I mean, truly a collaborative effort. I want to personally thank Kyle Gilmore. For those of you guys that don't know Kyle. He's our Parks Assistant Manager. And we had some 11th hour light and breakers and everything and he, you know, was there all day and. I just felt amazing having him around and just what he does to make sure that those lights turn on and. You know, the BTO, the Rec Department, this is I think our fourth year collaborating with the race and everything and we've really blown it out and. Looking up Washington, down both sides of Main Street, standing up there with Kelly. Doesn't get better, you know, see a goosebumps just talking about it. So it's good, good day for the town of Breckenridge, except the traffic. Yeah.
Those folks out because you're absolutely right. I know it's quite the event to orchestrate and especially when it all comes down to. The countdown and everything going right, going off without a hitch. So. Kudos to those folks that made it happen. Do you know what the numbers were?
We had. 915 moose and Santas. Sign up for the, it might be off one or two on those combined. So that was the most we've ever had. And was it Lucy 750 dogs? Is that?
More people than dogs.
Only the the dog was was a hit and we may have to bump that up a little earlier because a few of those straggling dogs that had to. Move off of Main Street. So the they didn't get trampled by moose. We're just protecting wildlife on Main Street. That's where we go.
Perfect. Well, thank you also for everything you do to coordinate that event and make it go off.
Definitely a team effort though.
All right. Any other questions? Uglers coming up Thursday. Any questions about past events, future? All right.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, John. Human Resources Update, Dana.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. In the packet is the usual data that I provide once a quarter. And so. This is July, August and September. And I'm here if you have any questions on the data that was in your packet.
Thank you very much. Questions for Dana? I think your explanation was. Very thorough, so we don't have any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, maybe we can move on to the ball field pavilion if we have everyone here. Yeah.
Thank you for being here so early. That works great.
What are you gonna do in our grand highlight?
Oh, yeah.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Oh, there's the. There it is up there. Um, so this is Clark and Anderson are joining me to talk about the ball field pavilion. They're the design team. So I'll let them take it away.
Thanks, Kendra.
Thanks Kendra and thanks for having us, Mayor and Council. We're excited to present the progress on this project. And have a few slides to take you through in the packet. We want to start with a little bit of a firm overview to get to know our team a little bit better. Our, our firm is Clark and Anderson. We're the design consultants on this project. We're a full service firm. It's been around for 78 years. I can go a little closer. Is that better?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's mostly for the people online. It's hard to hear when you call in.
Yep, understood. Yeah. So we're Clark and Anderson. We've been around for 78 years. Originally founded by a landscape architect and an architect from Harvard and they started the office in Lincoln, Nebraska, where we still have an office today. We're up to seven offices in the Midwest and the Mountain West primarily and are one of our main offices is in Fort Collins, Colorado, which started about seven years ago as well. We're full, like I mentioned, we're full service, multidisciplinary. Including the disciplines that you see on the screen here, landscape architectural. Architecture, civil engineering and architecture being the primary services for this project. We have expertise in in a wide variety of service lines, but we are excited to. For opportunities to work in the sports and rec market when we have an opportunity. Quick. With us today, I'm Kevin Small. I'm the project manager and lead landscape architect in our Fort Collins office. We have a large team working on this project in all different disciplines. With me today is Jake Essink and Courtney Harris, sitting right behind me. Who are also members of our landscape architecture team in Fort Collins. I can click if that's, that's easier. Yeah. So brief agenda, I'll give a project overview, bring everybody up to speed on the project that I'm, I'm pretty certain everyone's somewhat familiar with. And then go, we're excited to present two concepts to the group and to get your feedback on a couple of items between concept one and two. And then we'll, we'll present the respective phasing for each of those concepts as well. Project overview. This is Kingdom Park right here in town. Just down Main Street. It's the project site is the area that's outlined in red in between the two ball fields. That connects the parking lot of the rec center and the Blue Ridge, Blue Ridge path. So at at Kingdom Park, we have a few images here just to jog folks memory if needed. There's three primary goals and objectives. One is accessibility, bringing folks to the viewing area to use the space in between the ball fields and to the restroom. Connectivity to the Blue River Rec Path and then and safety primarily as it pertains to vehicular traffic at the entrance. If you're familiar with the roundabout here on the left, there's a little bit of uncertainty on on. You know, vehicles are supposed to move around that space. Not at all.
I might not do it right, but.
So site concepts and I'll keep this brief. Concept A, it's, it's in the packet. Includes an adjustment to that vehicular entry area, a removal of of the, the existing island. To add clarity for for drivers. Drop off area, enhanced sort of entry space and viewing area. That's kind of like the whole main portion of this project. And a highlighted primary. Kind of recreation path that would run through the, through the middle of our project site, but connect the, the Blue River path to the parking lot area. And the primary. Difference that you'll see in concept A between the next one I present is the location of the shade structure here. So this project will include. A new restroom and storage facility that also hosts some of the utility infrastructure. In order to bring it up to to accessibility codes. And like I said, project A has the shade structure. Or shelter for viewing purposes and and maybe otherwise or events otherwise. Disconnected from the restroom area. Phasing for concept A looks something like this. Phase one would include everything in the yellow area. So the primary viewing, the rec path. New restroom and storage unit. And then most likely the foundation work for the shade structure, but the shade structure would. Then happen in phase two itself. A little bit of foundation work also for the batting, future batting cages that you see along the north field here and. And a pad for future storage units as well. And then phase two would be the full build out of the, the new entry area with the removal of the parking lot. Island and then or more of a roundabout, I should say, and. The full build out of batting cages and an enhanced viewing area along the hillside here in the left field, fall line of the south field. Concept B has all of the same features as concept A. The only difference that you'll see here is that the shade structure is attached. Is attached to the restroom facility. There might, there may end up being a slight. A slight gap in between depending on how things work out architecturally and structurally, but it would be for all intents and purposes connected to the, to the restroom facility. In this option, phase one would sort of mandate that the whole shade structure is built at the same time. And and the rest of the phasing would be exactly the same as concept, concept A. And with that, I'll pause and what we're, what we're hoping for is your specific feedback on the location of the stage structure. And if there's a preference between concept A and concept B.
Could we ask some general questions first? I guess first, are you guys, is part of the scope of work you designing the dugouts?
At this.
Where the benches or whatever you want to call them.
So Dick, we were able to with the existing fence contractor to create those dugouts. I don't know the last time you got eyes over there. We finished the roofs. Right as the first snowfall came on. So they have moved to the proper location. That I walked with high school baseball and some youth baseball. So we were able to do that with in the scope of the first project. So we're good.
Second, my. Are you guys considering it? I don't really have things in mind, but I, I suspect, you know, we really want this to be a great. Home baseball field facility for our high school team who's never had one. Rarely has home games because we've never had turf and it's usually muddy or frozen or snowed in. So. That's exciting. But also I, I think we all envision this. Facility to be used for youth soccer tournaments, youth lacrosse tournaments, ultimate frisbee tournaments. You know, in conjunction with our other turf field and and just. Consider kind of the moving around of lots of families and lots of kids and and. You know, and and working with other fields in town kind of thing. Have you considered that and the design?
Yeah, and I suppose to answer these are, okay, yeah, yeah, absolutely. That's, you know, that's been a huge part of our discussions early on, and I know I refer to them as ball fields, but they're multi-use athletic fields. And a lot of, a lot of that provides inputs on how large the restroom facility needs to be, how much seating there needs to be. And and just like general spatial arrangements. So I think, you know, our understanding is that there's a huge fluctuation in the amount of usage is going to get. Depending on the day, season, time of year, or or specific events. And we're hoping, we're hoping to accommodate that with a lot of our design moves.
Awesome.
Yep.
Great. Pause there. If anybody else has questions, then get in the opinions.
Hi, thanks for the work on this. Just curious kind of relative. Dimensions, if you could just kind of walk me through the length and width of the, the batting cages, the shade structure and concept B. As or the, the unified building there in concept B and then the, the two different buildings in concept A, just to kind of help me. Put some square footage around it.
Yeah. So and we are still in the, this, we're finished with the schematic phase and digging into the design development phase. So some of these. Dimensions are a little bit in flux.
Yeah, that's cool.
Our batting cages are drawn at 20 feet wide by 40 feet long right now. And then there'll be two of them. So this, this entire batting cage space up here is approximately 20 by 80. It requires a little bit more investigation to ensure that that's exactly what's going to. Satisfy the needs of the user groups, particularly the high school team. When it comes to batting cages, larger is, is better. And then the, the concrete pad, you can kind of see it right here. That will hold future storage for the north field. And then there's one here on the south side for the south field is 20 by 20. And the structure for the restroom. And this one is the one that's mostly in flux. The, what we're seeing here on the screen is, is probably a little bit larger than it needs to be, but we didn't want to miss on that side. It's architecturally. We were fleshing out how many restrooms that we need. It's jogging my memory here. I believe it's 70 by 50. Right here. And then the. Pavilion space varies between from one to another and it's like, it's approximately. 40 by 30, which is a fairly standard pavilion size that you see here. And then when we attached it, it's the same square footage, just pulled out a little bit longer. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it sure does. And then I'm curious, does anybody know what we've got at Carter Park, like relative ballpark? Sizes on the, the specifically the interior space plus the bathrooms.
Thousand square feet? I recall it being a thousand square feet, both the interior and the exterior kind of. Whole pavilion area covered.
About a thousand.
Each of them is a thousand, I think it's 2,000 total, 1,000 each building.
Exterior. So you're thinking a thousand with the bathrooms over there at Carter Park. So this would be. Way bigger on the bathroom side.
I'm not sure I'm including the bathrooms in there. I think if I recall right on the rental agreement, it's.
The interior space, I believe, is a thousand square feet and then the exterior is like.
Just wanted to get kind of like relative in my brain. I know what Carter Park looks like. This helps very much.
And this interior space does include. A utility storage area and a little bit, little bit, yeah, electrical room. That's like, that's fairly large because it. It provides the power to all of the lighting for the, for both fields too, but.
That's really helpful. Thank you.
Do, do we have any kind of facility? I, I don't see concession and I don't think there's a need for it. However, we can expect there to be pop up concessions and such. Is there any kind of utility sink or anything so that. If something had to be washed, they're not trying to do it in the bathrooms. You know, maybe just a small little staging. Area with a sink in it or, you know. To help facilitate pop up concessions.
So at this, at this time, that's not included in this design. There is, there, there are no concessions to your point. I think it was determined that it was maybe not necessary. And instead just have the, the opportunity and space for pop up concessions when needed. At, at the moment, we have your standard restroom. Sink facilities and then water bottle fillers. And that, that's it at the moment.
Yeah, you might think about the small little utility room with a sink in it. Seems like all these youth events, that's an easy fundraiser. It's concession. So yeah, ability to wash would help with sanitation.
Okay.
You, when designing this. And thank you for being here today to present. I appreciate it. When you're designing this, what is the elevation change when you're going from the north field to the south field? And how are you compensating for that?
Yeah, so. The, the elevation of the fields is actually fairly close and I'm not going to have those exact numbers in front of me at the moment. But so what, if you all have been to this space, the amount of elevation change throughout varies pretty extraordinarily. And what, so what you have between the, the field level and like the, the finished floor elevation of your restroom today, which we hold, we tend to hold pretty true. Is about four and a half feet and it's fairly similar on both sides. I believe the south field is, is a tiny bit lower than that, but what we're doing to. What the plan to accommodate that is to use built in seating to bring. Spectators up to grade of the finished floor of the restroom. And then where today you see a lot of undulation in that. Kind of primary viewing area pathway, for lack of a better word, there's, there's like steps and ramps and, and twists and turns. We're, we're, our current plan is to sort of flat top, just like straight across at the finished floor level of the existing restroom. And then you'll ramp down at an ADA accessible grade on either side of the primary viewing area into the parking lot and then into the, towards the, the Blue River Rec Path. Is that? Okay. Yeah, it's, it's a, this, the, one of the biggest design considerations and challenges for this project is grading and drainage. And so and our civil engineering is not here with us, but they're working alongside of, alongside us as a landscape architecture group to. To ensure that it functions. From a grading perspective.
I appreciate that. You brought up the parking lot changes and, you know. Pitching down for the, to the parking lot. Can you talk a little bit about, you know. What the thought process on. Understanding the challenges that the roundabout, if you will, closes today and what it might look like on in page two when it's done.
Yeah. So essentially, let me see if I can go back to this. It's maybe not zoomed out enough to, to full. It's maybe not zoomed out enough to, to fully appreciate maybe where the confusion starts and ends with this roundabout. But you have a roundabout that has two-way traffic on both sides of it. Which is, which is counterintuitive. So when you pull in, it, it really looks like you can go either way. And when you're coming out of the parking lot, which is perpendicular parking. So there's no, it's not one-way traffic there either. You could potentially have two people heading the same direction, opposite sides of the roundabout, which, which just creates confusion. It's a parking lot, so hopefully traffic's slow. Um, but, but it's, uh, it's not, not ideal. Um, and then additionally, the roundabout is heavily vegetated. Uh, and, and we do like vegetation. However, the, it impacts the visual access to the parking lot and to the park. Um, and we're hoping to, we're hoping to. The visibility for users as they enter on foot, on bike, wheels or, or in a vehicle. By eliminating that as well. So that's sort of, hopefully that describes sort of the first. General challenge that exists today. And then if I go to the, let's say, concept A, they're both the same. What we're able to do is to effectively bump out non-vehicular area here. Um, just west of the, of the kind of what we're turning into a primary route. So you'll have two-way traffic in this area. Um, that is, is standard and typical for the way vehicles move today. And then we'll add stop signs to control traffic and you'll have basically a three-way intersection. So you can either go straight into this line of parking here. Um, or left into the other side and vice versa. So it kind of clean, cleans up that whole traffic flow to a more typical. Uh, typical intersection-like experience. This area then here is intended to also be hardscaped with a mountable curb of sorts. Uh, we're working through how we're going to ensure that regular vehi- vehicular traffic doesn't enter that area. Um, but it'll be visually different than our, our vehicular route and that area could be utilized for a variety of different things on, on the town side, uh, ranging from. Um, from storage to snow storage. And I don't know if you want to speak to, yeah.
Or buses, like if they drop off kids or, um, van storage from the rec center too, just because they have lots.
And.
We may be able to get a few, um, maybe 10 additional parking spaces closer down, um. Of course.
Yeah. So currently our parking ends about where my cursor is here and we'll be able to bring that all down. To about 24 feet from this edge here. So it's about 10.
And then they're also doing a drop-off area too on the right of that view.
And I believe there's an exhibit in your memo if that's helpful as well for that specific area.
Unfortunately, I don't have, um, alternatives, uh, to put out there.
Yeah.
But I would love to see, to challenge the, what's put forth up there to see if there is a. Better usage of that space, perhaps even moving the driveway to the opposite side, I guess to the west side. And so that it would allow to bump out more of that plaza, like where the bump out is on the west side currently. If we could put that bump out on the east side and to allow for expansion of that plaza down the road, uh. When we do have more capital to, uh, could spend on this or just to open up future opportunities, uh, wherever they may, you know, wherever they may bring us. But I think, um, just on the, the site of it. Uh, it seems counterintuitive to have that bump out beyond, on the west side over there where I think the usage, i- it's bisected by traffic. Um, and maybe have a decreased utilitarian aspect to it.
Yeah, uh, certainly appreciate that comment. We'll continue to, to explore this space. We had started it with it within the exact direction that you, I think where your minds at, uh, for increased pedestrian space, plaza space. Enhancements to, to the park area or park side of things. Uh, the, I can, I'll just mention briefly, our civil engineers from a traffic engineering perspective. Um, thought that it was a little bit less intuitive to have people come in on the left side and then turn. Like have, make the right turn and the left turn to then head sort of directly towards the rec path. Um, that, so that was one of the initial considerations. Um, and, and I think there's a, there's a few other inputs, but we, we can revisit that to ensure that it's, it's the. Best way to move forward. And if there's better ones, certainly make the adjustment. Early enough in the process.
As a town, we're a little hesitant on three ways, uh, you know, such as the south side of town. If you ever end up over there, you'll.
Yeah.
The hesitation.
Understood. Yeah, we'll maybe swing by on our way out.
The picture doesn't show this, but there is increased real estate on that curve. It's not what it looks like right now. That does move. On towards.
Yeah, it, it kind of tucks way back in here today. So you will see an enhancement. Certainly if we flipped it, there would be more, um, but want to make sure that we address all of the traffic considerations too.
Yeah. I know it's a challenge, but I like that Jay. I could increase event space and that kind of thing.
Totally agree. And I feel like most folks drive right through that peninsula anyways. So it'd be nice to not change that habit and. Get the extra park space from that peninsula where it's over there. I don't, I don't think we'd get any use. But I can also appreciate the extra parking spots. So if we can get more park space and more parking, that'd be great.
You go. Um, do you feel good that that 20 by 20 storage space is going to be big enough? I feel like historically, sometimes we run out of storage at rec.
Yeah. So that's from our, our parks department. It's think of it as mounds, rooms. Things like that. And, and our initial conversations, that is ample. So.
Um, and I know one of the current situations over there is kind of ADA compliance or lack of. Um, can you talk through a little bit about how this plan's going to address that? And also if you could describe for me what enhanced rec path entry means?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start with the enhanced rec path entry and then go back to the accessibility question. Um, currently the condition today, the rec path, if you follow my cursor here, tucks in a little bit closer to the, the park. Along this side here and you immediately hit, uh, extreme grade changes. And there's this canyon-like, uh, entry into Kingdom Park. Uh, which creates a, a bit of a traffic hazard, if not, if not a, a full-on safety issue. So that means, uh, when we say that word, we are proposing to bump out the rec path 15 feet or so, which gives some visual clearance. Between the, the north-south traffic and the traffic towards the park. Um, and then to, to address your first question on. How, how we are addressing accessibility on the site, the, the primary concerns and challenges with the site today are, have to do with. Steep slopes and grades that don't meet current ADA standards from an accessibility standpoint and, uh. Um, hardscape that is, is dated and in need of an upgrade from, uh. Just a structural perspective. So, so cracks and heaving and, um, and breaking down of existing hardscape. So those are the two issues that we are hoping to solve. We want the whole, the whole site, if possible, not just. Not just a single access or, or exit point to be accessible, but the whole site to be fully accessible wherever there's hardscape. To the best of our ability. So by bumping out the plaza here a little bit further west, uh, as John mentioned. We're able to create more length from the initial access to the park. To, from there to the finished floor of the restroom structure. So what we're trying to do is. We're trying to decrease that grade and the longer, the more space we have to do that, the better. So that's, that's move number one. And then, uh, move number two is to take all the undulation that's not ADA accessible within the inside of, of Kingdom Park. And level it all out. So it is all then ADA from that standpoint. Um, and. Currently today, there is, uh, an inaccessible slope right here as you head down towards the rec path. It's just too steep. So we're, we're trying to. We're trying to extend that length in order to meet ADA accessible slope as well. So we're doing it on two ends. The end towards the rec path here by bumping that out. So that actually helps with grade as well. And then as you enter the main viewing area, um, we'll, we'll use space to slowly get back to grade, probably closer to right around here. And not immediately when you get into the park like it is today.
One follow-up question on the rec path connector. Um. What's the plan to mitigate potential user conflicts? Or is there going to be a visual signal to? Slow down? I mean, there's going to be lots of families, kids.
Yeah, that's running around there. That's a, that's a great question. Um, I, our plan moving forward is, is to tap into the. The design language that's used throughout town. So there's, there is a, a common language, um, for rec path users. So, uh, my assumption as we dig further into that is that it'll include a little bit of signage, potentially some stripe. Um, on the path on both sides to signal or cue that there is an intersection, um, that's coming. The, the. My best guess is we'll keep the Blue River Rec Path as the primary route. So any significant stops or yields would come from the Kingdom Park side.
Okay. And if we're, I mean. I feel like most people go to the more northern entry to access the rec center. So I guess in my mind, I see this as a connector that we're not driving people to use because there will be. So many people running around that area. So in your design elements, I'd make sure to.
I also want you to think about the winter. Right now that's a big cut through for all the housing to get to the summit stage. So what we're creating also is a 12-foot path that can be plowed. That isn't treacherous to walk through out towards highway nine with this as well.
Okay. No. Cause they're going to the summit stage stop on highway nine.
Across. Yeah. So they have to cross the bridge then.
We encourage, uh, field users to ride their bikes too. Just to make that inviting. There's a playground. So as you leave town, you can stop. If you're on a family ride, oh, this is our first stop. We can ride it.
Sorry, I'm laughing at that playground.
Are you, are we going to be able to maintain? I know you said you're going to get rid of the islands, so I'm expecting those trees to go away. But there's so much tree cover around the outsides of those, um, fields. Just wondering if you're going to be able to maintain most of that.
I think we're going to be able to maintain some, but not all. Uh, we're, our conversations are strategically. Uh, or, or, or we're aiming to strategically keep the trees that, that we can and, um. And limit or minimize the ones that we are removing. Uh, the, if a tree is removed, it's removed to increase accessibility. And or, or critical viewing areas for, for the spectators. But th- there will be the removal of some trees, but, um, preserve, preserving, yeah, preserving the ones that we can.
Okay. All right. Do, are there any other questions? Okay. So give your thoughts, but also specifically, um, about whether you want one. Structure or two, I think that's. And then just if you're okay with the phasing, I think is the other. You want to start Todd?
Sure. Yeah, I'll jump in. Um, love both concepts. Thank you for putting those together. Love to see what Jade mentioned there with moving that peninsula land over to enhance the plaza. From the one versus two, I think I prefer the one structure. Less roofline, less siding, one structure to heat to me. Um, also the alignment there looks like it's better for viewing both fields from there. Uh, however, if the group feels strongly the other way, I, I think both are fantastic and it's an improvement. Um, if the budget allows, I'd love to do it all at once, but if it doesn't, then. Two phases is great. And yeah, good work. Excited to see it.
I have a que- you brought up two questions for me. One is that shade structure isn't heated. It's just the shade structure, right?
Correct. And, and in, in practice, it will be two separate structures almost definitely. Um, because that allows us some flexibility with certain structural things. Um, but it, yeah.
Um, so my other question is, I know that we're trying to save money by not moving the bathrooms. But in your experience and as you design something, are you concerned about how it kind of constricts that entrance way? Um, into, between the two fields? Or do you feel that this layout works just fine?
Yeah. So the, the way our site analysis evolved, um. We believe that it'll save some money by rebuilding in place, although maybe not significantly because, because it, from an accessibility standpoint. There's not really the option to renovate functionally today. Um, so we've kept that location, um, for a couple of reasons. But one of the main ones is. Where it's located helped, we thought was best from a grading standpoint to help solve the accessibility problem. And we think there's an opportunity for it's the existence of that structure to be kind of a visual cue from both sides located there. Um, so, y- yeah, I, I think that we explore, we explored all different locations for a potential restroom. And, and sort of landed at where it was built was probably the best place to start with.
Okay, that's great to hear.
Um, I agree with Todd's comments. I, uh, yeah, it's well thought out. It's cool to see batting cages. I didn't expect that. It's, uh. You know, I, I just, um. I just continue to encourage you to, I, I'm a one structure. In favor of the one structure. I like being able to, the viewing of both fields with the shade structure. I think that's really cool. Um. Just continue to consider events and, you know, I, you know, I mentioned a utility closet or a room or something with a sink, you know, and tell you ride. At their, um, concert venue, they just have a sink on the end of a building. It's like a three-compartment kitchen sink. So, so all their concessionaires, just you're constantly washing pans and stuff in it and stuff. So. You know, if there's no room for a closet or something, I simply doing it, you know, having it summer seasonal, obviously. But whatever. Um, yeah, I mean, great job. I'm, I'm excited. It looks good.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, thanks to your team, staff for working on this. This is going to be a massive improvement. So thank you. Um, between A and B, um. I believe with the shared shade structure that could, um, serve both fields, maybe open up some. Opportunities to have all that structure in one location. So I prefer, prefer concept B.
You want to, you want to finish it off? Um, I also prefer one shade structure and I just want to make sure that we have, you know. It sounds like you're really on top of the ADA compliance, but just making sure like the hillside viewing and the elevated viewing plaza are equally as inclusive as. Or as inclusive as we can make them.
Yep.
You know, and I, I think part of me wants to rely on, you know, the professionals to know what best practices are.
The most of us, that's not.
He said, part of me wants to rely.
You know, I, I imagine there is something that, um. Best practices in rec areas of whether to join these or to have them separate. I, I can see that, you know, having them separate might provide a little bit more area to spread out where they're conjoined. I don't know if there is confusion if there's like two games going on both fields of who's waiting in line for the bathroom and who's not. And who's standing around just trying to get out of the sun or I, I don't know how all that plays into it. And that's something that you guys. Uh, definitely know. I think having them together, if it was all the same, having that together. I think further is an objective that would allow us to do some expansion and provide more of a blank canvas. Down the road, if we wanted to be able to do something else such as concessions or. Uh, a larger playground or whatever it might be. I think that, um, the smaller footprint of having the structures together versus spaced out. Makes more sense if all is equal with, uh, best practices. Um, along Dick's line, I, I, I think that. We're, we're really adamant about trying not to do things twice. And so if all this is being dug up and all this is being leveled out, that if we can have some, uh, infrastructure for electrical, for water, for whatever. Um, things that we may want to use in the future, you know, and just planning where if it's. A tiny bit more money now to have that buried in so that we're not going up and digging up all that asphalt in three years. When we're like, oh, you know what? It'd be really nice to have a, whatever it is, uh, that either, I guess those two big things are electrical and water that I can think of. Um, and then I know no matter how big you, uh, build that storage, it will fill up. But I know that, uh, Summit County softball, as well as high country soccer would love to have little corners. So if it was, if there was room to build a little bit of a bigger storage where it could accommodate a couple of soccer balls, a couple of bats. Uh, I think that would go a long way for, uh, our partners.
McCrath. Um, okay. Well, I'm the odd man out. I definitely like the two structures better because. As a parent who's stood out there and watched like kids on both. Um, fields, I think that having that big structure in the middle really, um, creates two completely separate spaces. But I. creates two completely separate spaces, but I think a ton of the time, you're not really using it as two separate spaces. Um, and I know that a shade structure doesn't necessarily prohibit people from coming through, but assuming that it's warm enough during those two weeks of summer, when it'll get used, it'll be busy under there. Well, the, I mean, in my experience, the shade structures up here are freezing cold. And so I kind of like them to be over to the side so that you don't have to use it, but you could see you know, like eleven twelfths of the time, you're not going to want to use it. So I kind of like the idea of having it not dominate the um, area. But since you all have already voted.
It begs the question, do you want glass or walls on it to make it a little bit? And if there's electrical there, do you want heat in it? And I think now is the time to ask that.
Well, unless, if it's geothermal, then I definitely want it heated, but under no other circumstances. That's who I want it heated.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I just think energy, that's a tough, that's a tough sell.
Well, I meant putting walls and insulation and maybe some windows in similar to the structure over at Carter Park, that would, not all glass or not heating it open. Wasn't contemplating that.
Yeah, I do feel like that's kind of what Jay sees in the future is like that it could actually be a space, and that's why it should be one big space, but that's too far for, I mean, I haven't thought about that. That's too far in the future.
Yeah, that's cool.
Think about. But um, I really, really agree with uh, the point earlier about the parking and just, I, I think it seems like wasted space, the way it's designed right now. Honestly, I'd rather see forty extra spaces and two lanes of traffic and just make it not be difficult. I thought the bus point was a really good one. We definitely have to plan for having buses park over there because that's a certainty, and we already have the vans, so. If there's a way to reconfigure the space so that we don't have kind of an island at all, or that weird shape over there that is so awkward and doesn't work, you know, maybe um, between more parking spaces and bumping out the the actual area of, I don't know, the sidewalk, whatever that area is called. Um, I, I would love to see that, but um, I will leave that to the engineers for final. I think that's it. And then I really, I do love the trees. I hate that we're taking down trees to put up a metal shade structure, but that's, I understand the accessibility part of that for sure, so. As long as it's in the name of accessibility, then I can get on board. And the concessions, I do think we need a, a sink that's just safer and better, and it's for sure going to get used that way, so um, something to enable that is a great, great point. Any final points or questions? All right. Thank you guys for being two hours early so that we could really appreciate you accommodating our schedule.
So much.
Your work on it. Thanks, Kendra.
I don't have any. Eric, would you like to do the debt income statement discussion?
Yeah, let's do it. Welcome back. I just wanted um, give you guys a heads up that if we have Speaker McCloskey and Senator Roberts come in, we might interrupt this conversation, depending on how long it goes, just so that we keep them moving.
Got it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, this is a follow-up to a request on maybe a couple months ago before the budget was submitted, and we kind of tabled it until after the budget, but we do have this debt schedule in our 2025 budget submission, but what we did is tried to go through all of our uh, debts that we have today, whether they're loans or COPs, to come back and look at an overview to include revenue and other expenses related to that, uh, in addition to the principal and interest that you see in the budget package. So going in order, one is the utility fund. You know, we have the water treatment plant, which goes out to 2039, and we have the Goose Tarn Dam as well, which goes out to 2052. When we looked at that, we really looked at the utility fund as a whole, not really trying to come out with any different revenue numbers for that, so these numbers were tied to the five years that were submitted in the 25 budget, along with the expenses for the principal and interest. On the, on the other expenses categorized here, we looked at the uh, uh, operating expenses and/or capital expenses related to the utility fund. And so as you can see in the first five years, it's relatively, you know, balanced, I would say. Some years we eat into the fund a little bit, but it, it, it does, it's not a dramatic decrease. When we go out beyond that, you'll see some bigger cost related to capital. We do have a pro forma for utility fund that does carry out to 2052. There's a lot of projects that are out into the future. We don't have any revenue increases for um, our water rates going beyond, was it 2027, I think? And so, you know, was it 27 or 28, I think, but 27, yeah. So we'll be going back as we get down the road here on this, looking at the projects. This is how it is now in the pro forma. I would not get alarmed by this today, looking at that large deficit, other than to know it's an awareness factor, nothing more, nothing less, but that's kind of how that shapes up for utility. Jumping into the capital fund, this is really related to the uh, fiber infrastructure project, and I, I have a comment here on a pro forma. We are going to, we do have pro formas for the, the funds that uh, for housing, for utility, golf, et cetera. We are going to do one for fiber as well. I know there's a plan being worked on for fiber. Uh, but this is, and as it stands now, the revenue we do have in our budget uh, as well as the debt that we have for fiber. And then, once again, we have our capital cost, which usually has been running around $2 million a year. We deferred that in the CIP when we went through the budgeting process and kicked it out, so you see those increasing in the out years. But that'll all be updated as we go through and see what the longer-term planning is for fiber. Do we need to take a break?
I think we're okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay. There is really nothing on the other two funds related to the uh, childcare facility and the police station. Those are more projects that are winding down, so we didn't really have anything related to those other than what was in the budget. Really focusing on the workforce housing fund. We have three COPs for that. One is Huron Landing. So the rent that you receive, you show in here for the revenue, we have rental income, and also we bill Summit County for 50% of the COP. And so really, we don't have any other expenses beyond the debt payments, and so it's about $141,000 loss, which according to Lori is about what was planned for on Huron Landing.
Yeah, I think the only correction I, I think, and we'll double check with Lori's on Huron, I think the idea is that the rents cover half of the COP, and then the town and the county split the other half of the COP.
Right. Um, looking at Uller, uh, we are now starting to have revenue in 2024 because we had occupancy happening in 2023 for Uller. Uh, the main thing there is we, as we have, we absorb the entire payment of the, we don't bill Summit County, that's not an IGA, so we absorb 100% of the principal and interest uh, payments on the debt, and then I have an updated, this expense here is really related to the heater repair that we've got going on for 2025 and, or 2024 and 2025. And, and that's really kind of an overview of Uller. And then the last one is Larkspur. So it's kind of like here on landing, we bill Summit County for their portion of the COP 50%. Um, we don't have any rental income happening in 2024 for Larkspur, but that increase in revenue in 25 is related to having a full year of rentals in Larkspur, so we will start to see rental income happening in 2025 for the Larkspur apartments. So that's an overview of the housing projects that have debt related to them. And then the last one we have is the uh, Gondola parking garage infrastructure. So we have revenue, about half the revenue we have here is related to the fees we get for um, uh, the Gondola garage, and then the other half is the bell lift tax. We get more than what we put in here because some of that money is offset and to the covering transportation. So uh, the cost is really the debt payments and then the operating costs for the Gondola, so it's really at a break even level with a couple more million helping offset our transportation costs. That was a quick review.
Any questions? Big, big numbers?
It's a great big picture tool. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And you feel pretty good about this?
I do.
Good. That's all I need to know.
All right.
Thank you guys very much. All right, we are very honored to welcome Speaker McCloskey and Senator Roberts. We're going to get a little update from them. Thank you guys for coming over. Have a little update for us on, I'm not sure if you're going to give us a look back or a look forward or what you have in store.
We have a whole song and dance.
Oh, wonderful.
Right? It is the era of Wicked, so you know, we're musically inclined. Um, well, good afternoon, and thank you so much for having us. Uh, we have just come from Grand County where we met with that Board of County Commissioners, and I said there and will say here, it is so valuable to be included in your conversations, hearing from you what the priorities are for the community, uh, being able to share uh, updates as well as uh, kind of predicting what may be coming in this next legislative session. But your partnership, your advocacy for Breckenridge and connection with us makes all the difference, so thank you. I'd uh, love to start um, maybe with a a little bit of where we are in this moment for the state. Happy to answer questions about last session, but I think there's a lot facing us right now, and I, I'd like to be able to give you, maybe that is the headline. In September, we had a forecast that was uh, on one hand, very positive. Colorado's economy continues to outpace the national economy. Unemployment is low and inflation projected to be below 3% for the next two years. But affordability is still a big challenge for many of the folks we represent and we know, especially here in the high country. Add to that the fact that the state is facing a billion dollar shortfall, and we have tremendous pressure on our budget this year. Uh, the governor proposed his budget on November 1st. Uh, so we have our joint budget committee um, neck deep, uh, wading through conversations about both his proposal and what steps we might take to shore the budget up this year. It is really important for you all to know that the reason that we are facing a budget shortfall is due to an increase in utilization of Medicaid. We are in older and grayer Colorado. We have seen an explosion in the use of long-term care services under Medicaid and an overutilization of what we had initially forecast of medical uses. And I believe that this is something the state is going to have to grapple with, not just this year, but ongoing. The demographic shifts in our state are clear. Even our, our schools are seeing declining enrollment. We're seeing older and grayer and fewer and fewer families and younger children, so that shift is something that the state will have to grapple with. Um, I'm excited to say that in addition to affordability and our focus on housing, healthcare and childcare, really the three big pillars and the affordability um, challenges that, that families face, we are committed to protecting our investments in education. Summit School District is benefiting from our shift in our school finance formula. As a rural community, um, Summit, add to that the cost of living. Summit County um, benefits from our shift and focus on being a more student-centered driven financing formula as well as focusing on smaller rural remote school districts in this state. And so protecting those investments will be a priority, and I believe Democrats and Republicans alike are really, that is where we will ensure we protect those investments and make sure we don't roll back any of the great progress we've made for our schools these past few years. I will pause there and turn it over um, to my favorite partner, Senator Dylan Roberts.
Thank you, uh, Madam Speaker, and thank you all for the invitation. It's good to be with you this afternoon. Uh, I think we were here at a very similar time last year, and this is actually a great time for us to connect and as we uh, aren't in session yet, of course, but we're getting really close, so we're in the final preparations on a lot of uh, pieces of legislation and kind of understanding what the state's budget picture is going to look like. Uh, and would love to hear from all of you on some, any ideas or questions that you have. Um, but I'll, I'll echo the Speaker's uh, comments about the state budget. Uh, that is going to kind of overlay everything that we're doing at the Capitol this year. We're past few, you know, three or four years, we've had the privilege of a lot of federal dollars to spend, as you all have had on the municipal level as well through those COVID relief bills. And it helped with our budgetary picture um, as well. And now we're kind of we're at, we're done with those one-time dollars. We're out of the pandemic, and so we're kind of returning to a regular um, type of fiscal situation in which we have to balance our budget and deal with the restrictions that Tabor puts in place and and then, of course, inflation uh, continues to persist and cause challenges, but I think there are still some really exciting opportunities that we're looking forward to pursuing legislatively. Um, you know, as the Speaker mentioned, affordability is the number one thing I hear from constituents in, in my Senate district, especially here in Summit County, and I'm sure you do as well. And so um, we're looking to continue ways to help with the work that you're doing on affordable housing, which I would, will have to say, Breckenridge really is a leader in the state uh, for your affordable housing efforts, and, and thank you for that, and glad that you've been able to take advantage of some of the state dollars that we've made available. Um, and I know several of you were here when Dola came up a few months ago and really highlighted the great work that Breckenridge and Summit County is doing on housing, so thank you for that. I think there's still some more housing policy we can pursue even without the funding, uh, things like um, getting uh, more low-interest rate uh, bonds, uh, bonding ability for housing developers available, construction defect reform, other things that can maybe um, loosen up the housing market and, and um, help us with that challenge. Uh, property insurance is going to be a huge topic at, at the legislature this year. It has been the last few years. The Speaker's been a leader on that front and Commissioner, the Insurance Commissioner for the whole state was in Frisco a couple weeks ago, holding a town hall about some things that the state might be able to do to help with the frustratingly high cost of, of property insurance, both residential and commercial, um, and what we might be able to do to, to provide some relief in that space. Personally, I'm also um, working with uh, the Card of Municipal League on a couple bills that they've put forward as priorities. I'm sure you're all aware of this. The ability for counties and statutory towns to um, propose an excise tax to their voters for certain community needs. Grateful to have CML support on that, and we're in negotiations and talks about what that bill will look like if it comes forward. And then working with CML as well on a criminal justice bill to try to fix some of the problems we see when repeat offenders immediately get released from municipal uh, jail and, and the municipal court system, um, and then commit new crimes that causes challenges for your local law enforcement, and we might expand that to county uh, court as well. And then in addition, as, as you all know, some of my big passions are in the natural resources space, protecting our water, our agriculture industry, and so um, to, you know, have a few pieces of legislation ready to go in that, in that world, and overall protecting our natural resources, our water, as we know, is so important here on the western slope, especially um, in Summit County. So yeah, that's what's on my agenda and I'm honored to serve Summit County with the Speaker of the House who just got re-elected as Speaker, uh, by the way, and we're very excited about that. And, but I'll echo her, her um, thanks to you for being great local partners, and it's not, never lost on us that we go down to Denver and we pass a lot of laws and, and things, uh, but it's up to you to implement them, so thank you for that, and I'm always open to your correspondence and ideas and questions. So thank you.
We feel very lucky to have you. Are there questions?
I'll start off with an easy one first. I mean, we feel so grateful to have your voices representing us at the Capitol and not just a voice there, but truly leaders, and we know Breckenridge is well represented at the Capitol. Um, so to start off with an easy one, uh, not really. Huge part of our um, uh, conversations here at mayors and managers internally as a town. We're talking a lot about how we support our workforce, our immigrant community members, and unfortunately, this is largely a federal issue, and there's only so much the state and locally what we can do. We're lucky to have incredible local organizations like Mountain Dreamers provide, provide resources, but wondering, are there any conversations at the state level?
Thank you. I would love to give you an update from what's been happening in the House. And maybe I need to start by saying it saddens me that the larger conversations around immigration have become so much about othering or hate-filled rhetoric instead of showing up to this conversation with compassion. And I am incredibly proud to be from a community that not only has a Mountain Dreamers leading in ways to support our immigrant community, but recognizing how critical they are to our workforce, our community, our community fabric, right? These are families that have now grown up in our community and deserve a level of respect and dignity that I fear the larger conversation negates. The House, our caucus, Democratic Caucus, we are 43 members strong, launched a working group around immigration right after the election. We know that Operation Aurora is a part of the conversation at the national level. We are taking a very close look at the landscape around immigration law that's been passed in this state where we may have gaps or opportunities for us as a body to strengthen our position to protect people's rights and freedoms. I think there is a conversation for Colorado to have around what may happen when, if there is an effort from federal agencies to come into our state and go after a made-up story in Aurora that certainly it's, it's, has been frustrating on many levels. But I, we are meeting with the Attorney General on Thursday of this week, my entire caucus, to talk about the concerns that we have and to ask for guidance and input and partnership in where we may go next.
Yeah, I don't have too much to add. And the, the Senate is also engaged in a conversation with the Attorney General's Office right now to sort of get a comprehensive understanding of what laws are in place in Colorado, what could potentially be passed by the state to provide a level of protection. But there is, you know, the, the reality that this is a federal issue, at least the enforcement of it is. And there may be some things that we can do to, to help on the, on the margins. But in large part, we'll be responding to what, whatever starts happening from the, from the federal level. I think for you all as municipal leaders and, and certainly a conversation with county law enforcement and state law enforcement is, you know, how much, if any, cooperation there is, you know, that is not the purview of local law enforcement. But we know in some parts of the state and some parts of the country that does happen. And that is something that we can all work to hold ourselves accountable to, I think.
Thank you.
Yep.
I, I, so when the fire insurance town hall took place, it was actually on a Tuesday night. So we were all here at council. So I was wondering if you guys could update us on what we should be telling our constituents? Because we have had several people either write in or come. So I'm just wondering what's going on specifically? And, you know, should we be telling them still to be feeding you guys information and stories? Or what's the best thing we should be doing?
Yeah, really good question. In '23, we passed the Fair Plan, which was a safety net insurance proposal for, you know, private residences, small businesses, recognizing then that that was a good first step, but we had a lot more work to do. This last session, we passed a bill to conduct a study on what we should do for larger commercial properties, HOAs. I have often used and really appreciate the partnership of Beaver Run, but I've used Beaver Run as an example of a facility that I think was denied property insurance by 22 different carriers, brokers in their pursuit because of what has happened here in Colorado. At the town hall, really well attended. There was someone who's been a great voice on this front. I should say Councilman Rankin, not Todd, but Barb was there and, and has been a great voice. And I would say across the board, we always appreciate more input on this topic. But the presentation was focused on what are the cost drivers for property insurance here in the state? We're seeing this problem nationally. There may be a need for some national reforms. But here in this state, I think one of the steps we're exploring right now is looking at how wildfire modeling occurs and how that is influencing insurance ratings and making sure that those scores around a wildfire mitigation or modeling practice is reflective of what's actually happening on the ground. There isn't a draft that I'm aware of at this point, but it is a conversation that I think deserves more time and merit. I think the hail concerns that really burden Colorado, right? There was a great example from Commissioner Conway that a two 45-minute hailstorms, one in Denver and one in northeastern Colorado caused as much damage as the East troubles. No, the Marshall Fire, Marshall Fire. Wow, right? And so hail really being the significant cost driver in this state. Well, we know hail doesn't impact our communities, right? So are there other ways we can think about the risks here up in the high country and help mitigate some of the cost increases we've seen?
That's really interesting.
Very much appreciate your work in that space and appreciate your work in supporting small business as well. Something I'd like to bring to your attention, you probably already are aware, are aware, but some of the challenges around income testing and some of the grant monies in housing. Those models don't always work in our communities, you know, centered around AMIs. And, you know, just to simply exist here, at 30 and 40% AMI, there just aren't many people here. And so, you know, maybe helping us fund infrastructure for multiple projects. If we could make some of those monies a little more available would be fantastic where we aren't really targeting specific projects with income testing. And we're maybe just looking at another model for income testing. You know, we're all working towards the same goal and we so much appreciate the work on the state level and the federal level. But as you pointed out, I think we're going to be relying a little more heavily on the state. But to be successful together, just realizing that, that our rural resort communities have some uniqueness to them, as you guys well know. So the, yeah, that income testing piece around housing grants is, can be problematic for the local communities.
Absolutely. And you're identifying a challenge that we face probably on a daily basis down at the Capitol of, of explaining to our colleagues that we don't just represent a place where people vacation. We represent the people that make those, those places run and the unique differences that come with that and that we still have affordability challenges, often much more acute even than other parts of the state because of that. And the issue around AMI and housing is frustrating and challenging. Certainly, we have made some good progress over the last couple of years. And the Speaker and I have worked on several bills that have provided much more flexibility in either the grant dollars or the loan dollars available for housing. You know, the, the Transformational Affordable Housing Grant Program that we used a large part of our COVID money for, we were able to get the AMI up to 170% in rural resort areas. And I think the town of Breckenridge and Summit County has been able to take advantage of that. And then the ongoing funding that Proposition 123 provides. We worked on a bill last session to create a waiver process where higher cost communities could apply for funds at a higher AMI level. We've run in, or we've seen some pushback on that idea. Summit County in particular has an application right now where they're trying to get a waiver. I'm confident that that will work out, but it has been frustrating for sure to see some opposition from groups on the front range who, who think that this, this part of the state doesn't deserve that type of waiver. And we know certainly that it does. And so we've fought for that waiver and will continue to support any other communities that want to apply for 123 funds and get a higher AMI level. That being said, given the budget situation we have, you know, the, the dollars available for infrastructure or for really anything is going to be a challenge for the next couple of years. But always happy to, to explore ways to expand access to that. And then I, I know that on the federal level, it, you know, it might take a while, but people like Congressman Nagus have introduced legislation to change the AMI calculation and maybe do it by zip code or by county at least for the Lytech programs and other federal funding that's available for housing. So I would love to see things like that move forward. Might be hard right now, but I know that he, he and his staff really pushed for that. So could provide some relief there.
He's quite an ally. Appreciate him as well. But thank you for the work. I appreciate it.
Thank you guys so much for being here. It's, it's an honor to have you. You know, you alluded to some of the workforce housing that our town and the county has been working on. And oftentimes we are faced with a trade-off that's really difficult of making it somewhat attainable and make it sustainable. And so a lot of, you know, some of the projects that are upcoming, we're looking at geothermal and, and other creative ways. And so if there's anything in your travels that you see while you're at the Capitol that can help assist us move that ball forward of making it both attainable and sustainable, that's really, you know, we're doing, our housing department has put it up against any in, in the country. They're, they're fantastic, but we are, you know, there's certain barriers to entry with some of these new technologies that we're trying to take advantage of while also not putting it out of the reach of our budget or the workforce that will eventually move in.
Really appreciate that comment. You know, Breckenridge, you all have been so innovative and really leaned in on renewable energy, the work that you've done trying to get to net zero and a number of different fronts. I appreciate that. Thank you. And I, you know, I'll mention even, we were just hearing from Grand County, visited a housing project that is just getting underway and talked a little bit about modular, right? Which you did so successfully here with the Justice Center project, I know in part with the county, right? That was a, a group effort, you know, and it's finding those more innovative approaches and trying to think differently. And, and you've been leaders on that front. We see opportunities or other models, be happy to send that your way.
Speaking of grants, something that we've experienced on a couple of different fronts, just something to, for you to be aware of, understanding that money is going to be harder and harder to come by. But both in, you know, like childcare funding from the state and also sustainability funding from the state is just that there's such a long lead time that it makes it very difficult to actually, you know, sign up a contractor and get the program going. And so if there's any opportunity to make some of those grants come in faster, you know, I don't know if there's a way to prime the pump so that we don't have to wait as long for those to actually hit the books. But that's just something that we've had several struggles with recently that wanted to make you aware of.
Yeah, thank you. And I, and certainly we don't have to do it on the record, but if there's ever anything specific that we can be helpful with, like if there's a specific department that is particularly slow or, you know, sometimes, you know, we're happy to send an email and be like, can you get a status update on this project? And our, or this grant application, our district, we're, we're always happy to do that.
Yeah, and it's not even an application necessarily. It's like money we know we're going to get. Coming so far in the future that it's hard to make it all pencil out.
Okay, same thing on that, on that side of it too.
One other thing, Senator Roberts, you have a wireless telecommunications bill that's coming up. Can you tell us a little bit about it and maybe why you think it's necessary?
Yeah, so during the interim period between when we got done with session and this new session, I served on the, it was a one-time interim committee concerning cell phone connectivity. And three bills from that committee were put forward. I am, I think the one you're referring to, I'm the Senate sponsor, but it's starting in the House. And that bill relates to trying to speed up some of the applications that cellular companies have for new, either new infrastructure or improving existing infrastructure. And we did hear from the town of Breckenridge during that bill process and, and from CML. It essentially puts in a, some people call it a shot clock, but like a, a, a time in which that permit needs to be approved or at least reviewed. So that, that's the idea. And Breckenridge was never an example that we heard about or nowhere, even in Summit County of, of municipal governments or county governments delaying things. But in surrounding areas, we've heard it's taken over a year to get a application to just even improve a satellite to improve cellphone coverage. And that seemed unacceptable. So that's where the bill idea comes from. Interim committee bills are always a little interesting because they're really just the starting point for conversation. They are not the final product. So I know CML is working with the House sponsors very closely on that to probably put in some amendments that we don't want to put a burden on your, your city staff or anything like that. And, but the goal is again, to sort of help along some of the other towns. And like I said, Breckenridge was never brought up as an example, but some, some towns were kind of in the way of improving cellphone coverage. So that's the idea behind the bill.
Understood. Okay, thanks for that update. And I'm sure that there can be some, you know, just changes in between now and then that can make it pretty doable for us. But that, it just, the shot clock, I think it was like a, it's just a pretty quick turnaround.
Yeah, six, 60 days.
Way less than a year.
Yes.
So that was something we were certainly keeping an eye on.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I think we all, and I think the Breckenridge and CML all acknowledge that we need better cellphone coverage, especially in the mountains. And we're just trying to find the ways to improve that.
Yep, understood.
Yeah.
And we appreciate the open lines of communication. We know things will get wild and very quick in a short time here. But since you're in front of us, another specific piece of legislation we've heard about is the YGBI bill, which would allow certain institutions to kind of sidestep our planning process. So very much for the same reasons, we thought 213 was problematic, that they wouldn't have to follow our code, that they wouldn't mitigate community impacts. We're closely watching that and have some, some concerns with that one.
I, that is good to hear. Thank you. I have not yet engaged with those bill sponsors, nor have I looked at the draft. So I'll be sure to flag it and follow up. I don't know if that's starting Senate or House.
I think it's a House bill.
Yeah, great. Then tag me, pick on me when it.
Heard it at least, yeah.
Density, affordability, any of those requirements that we need for housing to work in our community.
I think as, you know, you lift up 213 as an example, it is common that legislation that comes forward with a new big idea takes a year or two, primarily because all of us need to have a voice in the process. There needs to be listening and learning and trying to reach the right balance. And I, forgive me for not having yet seen that bill or spent time with those sponsors. I will do so.
Thank you.
Do you guys have anything that you're hoping to present that you'd like Breckenridge to consider weighing in on? Or is it too early to say that? Or any way that we can be of assistance to help you all? I know that you always have our community's best interests in mind and we would certainly really like to consider if there are ways that we can support you down at the Capitol, the way you guys always do for us.
Mayor Owens, I would say that you all are highly engaged and you have provided feedback as we've needed it. You know, my sense election day, my world has been focused on the nuts and bolts of getting the House ready to go come January 8th. We just made our committee appointments yesterday. I am now working and kind of setting the policy agenda along with Senate leadership. A lot of the topics we touched on and knowing kind of what we face with the budget, our focus as a community may be shifting not towards what more can we do, but what do we want to protect? If we have to look at cutting services or programs, where, where are our priorities? And what do we want to make sure that we keep in place as we move forward? So yes, I will definitely reach out and ask for your input. Again, I think it's a little bit early, at least for me, but you've been great partners. I'll count on that. Come down and visit. Your voices in testimony has a tremendous impact. Your voices as we are crafting legislation really matters. So please don't hesitate to let us know if you see something and we haven't reached out. Please be sure to ping us and, and give us some feedback. You've all done that so well. I have no doubt you will not hold back and you'll keep us posted.
It's exactly the same on my end. Never hesitate. You know, I mentioned a couple of bills I'm working on with CML. I think those are probably the most pertinent for municipal government and look forward to working with you all on those. And we might have some more things. I know several of us have been at meetings over the interim about commercial vehicles either coming through Breckenridge and uh, commercial vehicles, either coming through Breckenridge and Blue River or I seventy. Anticipate there might be some legislation on that front. Would love to get your input as the, at that, as that develops. But, uh, yeah, as of right now, um, we're still getting those bills, you know, in their first draft form and certainly happy to send out anything that we think is relevant your way for your review. And, um, you all know how to get ahold of us when the session starts moving quickly.
Yes.
Do you have anything else? All right. Well, I just want to thank you guys because your tireless work for our community has made a huge, huge difference over the last, um, decade, decades, however long you've been working for us. But we really appreciate how available you are and how you're always, um, keeping us at the forefront of your minds. And, um, just want to acknowledge your hard work and year round, and especially going into the session. We hope that you have a very restful holiday before that.
You too. For having us. Yeah.
Very much. Thank you all.
Our pleasure.
Much.
All right. We're going to take a break. Ten minutes. Be really liberal with. I think we're going to restart this and just so everyone knows, we are under other engineering standards, rules and regulations because we are jumping all around today. Hello, Shannon.
Erin Council. I have for you in the packet, an update to the engineering standards and construction specifications. I have gotten some feedback. There are a few more typos we need to catch in there. But basically this is an FYI for council as the code allows the town engineer to update these standards as needed.
Looks great. And it was really just that red line stuff at the, there's just a few upkeeping, like housekeeping matters, right?
Very much housekeeping to support, for Jeffrey, to support, um, the town's application for the dark sky certification.
Okay. Any questions?
All of it?
Everything that was underlined and in red.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
All right. I think we're good then.
Perfect.
Thank you very much. All right. And planning matters. Workforce housing building height. Mark, is this you?
Good afternoon. Uh, I think we touched on this at the joint meeting with planning commissions, uh, a few months ago. But, um, one of the things the planning commission has identified along with staff is, that there is a, um, right now, the code, um, kind of discourages workforce housing in a way in that any build, any project over two stories in height receives negative points in, in a lot of land use districts, not in all land use districts, but in a lot of them. So, um, anyway, um, staff is suggesting a code amendment that will essentially address that issue. One of the things I wanted to point out, and it's in the memo, is that, um, the way our code works, single family and duplexes actually are kind of exempt from that provision. And they're allowed to go to thirty five feet basically by right. But, um, for other projects like workforce housing or multi-family or commercial, um, negative points get assigned a lot of times, um, depending on the land use district. So, um, suggested an amendment that would basically allow for projects that are workforce housing where the majority of the square footage is, 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 is for the housing to, um, not receive negative points at three stories and only start accruing negative points at three and a half stories or more. So, and that's on page, uh, one oh one of your packet, page two of my memo, um, where at negative five points for exceeding, but, um, three stories in height going up to. Thank you. Sorry about that. So anyway, that's, that's a proposal that we have in front of you. And, uh, then, uh, a couple of things we would look for your input on is if you think that the parameter we should be using is a majority of square footage of a building. So, um, we're thinking that we want to provide an incentive. And, um, so we wouldn't want to say that a hundred percent of a project has to be workforce housing, but that's some percentage and we think at least a majority of the square footage should be affordable housing. But we'd look for your input on that as well. We don't know exactly what that, um, incentive would be that would drive some private developer to decide to take advantage of this. But, um, we're suggesting that at least a majority of the square footage has to be dedicated to workforce housing. Example might be city market property. We see some redevelopment there. You know, allowing to go to a third story, maybe an incentive to get some workforce housing. Secondly, uh, this only applies to employee housing projects that are less than three stories in height. And we're still assigning negative points beyond that, but we're certainly looking for your input on that. Right now, the way we have it written, you could go up to four to four and a half stories and receive minus twenty points. Maybe council isn't comfortable with that. There's a couple of land use districts that do allow going that high. Most of them limit it to three stories, actually most to, some allow to go to three stories in our land use districts. And then I'm looking for any other suggestions or, um, thoughts that the council may have. So that's a brief overview. I'm glad to answer questions at this point.
Thanks, Mark.
Yep.
Mark, when you, um, we talked about thirty five feet as being, uh, the height limit for single family homes. And then, uh, what were we saying? Two and a half stories for, um, workforce housing. Can you, what, how many feet is two and a half stories?
Thanks, Jay. Um, I forgot to, um, mention that. So the way our code works is the first two stories are measured at thirteen feet. So two stories is twenty six feet. And then every story beyond that is twelve feet. So, um, three stories is thirty eight feet. And then on from there, if four stories will be fifty feet.
Do you, from when that was, um, instituted, is that because the massing of a workforce housing development is so much larger that, is that why it was held to a, a higher standard or a lower, uh, height?
No, it had, um, actually has nothing to do with workforce housing. It's just every project is subject to that same threshold, whether it's commercial, multi-family, anything that's not single family. So.
Do you think that is because of the, uh, perceived massing of it when it's, it's a larger project?
I'm not sure honestly why that was put in place to begin with. I know we did have former council members that were very supportive and Keefen had had two stories and didn't want to see that exceeded.
My mayor too.
Any other questions?
Mark, using your city market example, um, assume that the first story stays commercial as it is now. And then workforce units are built on top of that existing structure. Is majority going to be by square footage? Like, how is the pro, how does that project become majority workforce housing in order to exceed?
Yeah. The way it's written, it's by square footage. I mean, we originally, when we talked with the council, uh, the commission, planning commission, we actually talked about number of units, which might've been a benefit to the developer in that, for example, they could have done the majority of the units as workforce housing, but still had the majority of the square footage as market. In talking with the planning commission, planning commission thought it was important to at least get that majority of the square footage assigned. So in this case, it would be, yeah, you had the first, if you had the first floor that was commercial, but then the second and the third were, um, you know, workforce housing or most of those. Then you could get to that threshold where you got to the fifty percent to allow that to occur without negative points. The, it's fair enough to say, I mean, we've had a number of projects that have come through and have been able to pass through the process we have right now, but it is at the same time, uh, somewhat a disincentive. And if we're trying to provide incentives in the future, and it's, and it's frankly, sometimes a challenge for us and our own projects to get to a passing analysis too. So that's the reason we have that. We're suggesting this be put in place. But we have had projects that have passed, incurred the negative ten points typically for going a story over or whatever.
Mark, both with, um, the projects that have passed and maybe continuing with this hypothetical if there's the redevelopment of city market, wouldn't a development agreement always be a tool that we can use and go by a more case by case basis?
Yes, it could. I, I'm just using that as an example. Uh, Carol, there, um, you know, there, there could be any number of workforce housing projects down the road. Some of them that actually the town will be doing. And so for example, with runway development, are we gonna, you know, go to negative points right away with runway or not? You know, that's one, just one example. Another workforce housing project that the town might do as well. It's something that we'll have to overcome too in our development review process.
Are we proposing over two stories in the runway development?
Probably not, but, um, we haven't got there yet, you know, in terms of like the triflexes, for example, if we do those.
So, um, when a private developer, typically they don't do workforce housing or deed restricted housing out of goodwill, they do it as a contingency or to, or a, uh, obligation in order to build market rate units. Are there, when they overcome those negative points of building height, do we get positive outcomes from those at times? You know, I'm thinking about the, um, Highlands at riverfront where the deed restricted portion was over height and to, uh, overcome those negative points, they didn't run gas to those, to those units, correct?
That's right, Jay. Uh, so in the case of high, it's, it's a good example. It's already approved. So we can talk about it. They received ten negative points for going a half story over the height limit. And, um, they were able to overcome that with, as you said, the going to all electric, which council recently put in the positive four points for doing that. Which I think is appropriate. They also received a positive four for landscaping. They had a pretty robust landscaping plan there. That's a maximum they can get there. They also received, uh, positive three for a paved connection to the rec path. And finally, another point for, uh, stepping down the buildings. So those are the type of things that, um, they did to get to a passing point analysis. In some cases, it's more complicated than that, you know, like some of the BGV projects, for example.
I just wonder if the code existed as proposed, we wouldn't have gotten those benefits. There would have still been a gas line, maybe not a rec center connection. Maybe a decreased landscaping. And so I wonder if in practice, do the negative points actually work in the town's favor when those deed restricted, uh, units are required?
I think in that case, it did work in our favor. Um, I guess the question is a fairness thing. One is that we're, we're kind of penalizing any other type of, um, housing beside or housing or commercial for it, except for, uh, a single family duplex, which get these higher building height allowed outright. And then the unknown of if other projects, how those will shape out. I think in the, the case that you're bringing up, Jay, it's, it was a fair, it seemed to work well. And certainly we're very happy that they're going all electric.
Mark, can you give us a, a description of a time when this didn't work well?
I, I know that we've had projects in block eleven like, um, McCain, Vista Verity and that, where it was a challenge to overcome those points. And, uh, we managed to do it at the end of the day, but it was taking advantage of all the positive points that were available for public projects. There's, there's positive points for, um, you know, meeting certain council goals and things like that, that we were able to take advantage of. But we, I remember staff having to do in some searching there, looking like, how are we going to get this to a passing point analysis? So that's, that's an example I can think of right away, Kelly. Like I said, some of it's just, you know, for the future, how we want to set ourselves up or not. The planning commission was pretty unanimous that they supported this. So that's why, you know, and staff supports it as well. So that's why we brought it to you guys. But we're certainly happy to take a look at this further, like before we take any action.
Are there other questions? I have a question about, um, so would this, you, I think you said, and maybe I misunderstood it, but that some of the land use, um, some of the lugs were like there's an absolute, there's a time when you couldn't get negative points to go over. Is that right? Like it's absolutely capped at a certain height?
Yeah. Um, the way it works right now is, um, and this is not included in your packet because it, it just didn't make it in there. But on, uh, page two of my memo, the very top of the page, it, it talks about, um, for all structures outside the historic district, how the points will be assigned. And this is the existing policy. And then we have this underlying sentence and then you go down below to see what we're proposing as new language. It, it goes to, uh, minus twenty points if you're going between one and a half and two stories over the recommended, height in the land use district. So if it's two stories, then if you're going to three and a half or four stories, you can get to minus twenty points. If it's three stories, you could get to four and a half to five stories under minus twenty points. But any, um, what's not listed here is a final bit of wording that basically says that beyond the minus twenty, it's an absolute, you can't go any farther. So, um, and I have a copy of that language here somewhere, you know, dig it up in a second here if I can find it. But anyways, yeah, it's right here. It says that, um, any structure exceeding two stories over the land use guideline recommendation will be deemed to have failed absolute policy six.
At still? Or would this supersede then?
That, um, that's in effect for everything else except for the workforce. So I'd look for, uh, council's direction on that. If you'd like to insert some language like that here, and we can decide at what point we would do that at, after one and a half stories, two and a half, two stories over, whatever that would be. So that's certainly language I would recommend that we do add.
Okay.
Yep.
And do you think like, it's easy to, um, think of city market where it would be commercial on the bottom and then workforce house, or yeah, workforce housing on top. But in most cases, it would be, in any other case, it would be workforce housing on the bottom. And then, you know, other units on top, market price units. So do you think it's like encouraging the height increase? I guess just because, I mean, for one thing, you get better views, um, for those higher units. I'm just trying to think of if there are some, if there's an unintended consequence of, I mean, I think we have a couple of specific projects in our minds and I'm just concerned that we're not picturing what could happen sort of in the more normal instance.
So for example, uh, a project that was all, it was like market condos mixed with workforce deed restrictions that it would drive up the height. And they would take the negative points to get as high as they could to put in more, uh, of the market since they could do half of them as market.
It would still have to be half though.
Yeah, it still have to be half. So it's this balance of, do we want to incentivize that? I mean, we were able to like with, um, Tom Bagley's project several years ago. We got half of the, um, half of those units deed restricted. There was fourteen units in the, was it the Centura building over there? We got half of the, half of those units deed restricted. There was fourteen units in the, was it the Centura building over there? Half of, on the second floor, half of those were deed restricted, half of them were market. So it's like, where's that balance that makes sense for the community and for the developer?
But that was a development agreement, right?
No.
Did that through?
What was a, was that an, and that wasn't an?
It was a master, I think it might have been part of the master plan that set that. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So it's kind of a balance in what is that, you know, how much do we want to provide incentive for this or not in the future? With private, you know, market projects. We've suggested fifty percent, maybe that's not the right threshold. I'm sure, you know, we could do something less. If we talk to developers, they may say it needs to be higher. So.
Are there limited places where this could actually happen? I mean, this wouldn't happen on a single family lot in most of the towns, so.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be in the areas that allow for multifamily residential, commercial, mixed use, the most part. I mean, our theoretically, our land use districts allow. Any use in the district, but that's a real stretch when we're talking about single family neighborhoods. That's, it's just not going to happen. And the lots, the dimensions aren't going to accommodate this type of use. So we're talking mainly the commercial and the higher density areas of town that are. They have that kind of land use designation.
Any other questions? So. I mean, I think there are three questions. Do we have enough information that we want to make? Make a recommendation to change this? I mean, I'm not. I guess I'm sort of considering what Jay said is that it comes. Although it seems like an easy thing to do, it will come at a cost to the community, not to the town. Us, but to the community, because we're getting a lot of benefits out of this. So I don't know if people feel like. You want more information or you're ready to make a decision on this? The questions. Being is the majority language enough? Also the points.
Mayor, can I add, I think maybe the first question is, is their interest in moving forward to make any changes to the code? Given the tools that you already have in place and whether or not you feel this is necessary. So I think maybe we should answer that first and then can, if the answer is yes, you would like to make some changes, then, you know, do you need more information?
Jay, do you want to kick us off?
Sure. Mark, thank you so much for taking the time to, to put this memo together and thank you to planning commission for weighing in heavily. I think this was a really interesting discussion that we had during our joint meeting with the planning commission where. I think it highlighted some of the different ways we look at kind of the same problem. In putting this together, I look at, you know, multiple, multiple family dwellings typically have a larger massing than, than single families. And that's how I kind of square, you know, why maybe the height. Allowance is a little bit different. And when we, when we, as we talk about neighborhood preservation. And, you know, we, we look at that, I think it's important that as a town, we, that we talk the talk and walk the walk. And that we're willing to hold ourselves accountable for the same standards that we hold others. I, I am not convinced that. Increasing the height of multi, multifamily dwellings and the deed restricted. Will encourage additional private development in that deed restricted arena. I think that it is beneficial to have the town be held to tight standards on, on our projects. And I think it's very, very beneficial to hold private developers that. Need those deed restricted units to kick off their market rate units are held to a higher standard on those. And that we get such benefits as we've seen. I, I don't believe that the city market example holds water. I don't think that that is, and be a, a by the code example. I think when we go into that, that's maybe a development agreement. That will hopefully be mutually beneficial for the town and for them. And I think that the, the code that's in place sets. Sets the carrying capacity of the valley at a reasonable level, and I would be very reluctant in trying to expand those.
Anybody want, want to go for that?
Yeah, I'll jump on the other side of the coin. Thank you for those thoughts, Councilman Derkman. One of the things that I think I. Wonder about is the carrying capacity of the basin, right? And understanding how we define that as a team, right? So that we're all working towards. Meeting and, and not overbuilding that capacity. And so kind of having that as a target out there, that's something. For me, it would be a fantastic model to kind of have of like, here's where we think. What the basin can handle from a housing standpoint. As I look at our most valuable asset, other than our employees and, and the community, the people in the community. I view our land as just incredibly valuable, especially as we approach build out. In this case, I, I like the idea of having an extra floor there to, to, to get workforce units, especially as. We work from twenty-five to twenty-seven percent up towards that housing blueprint goal of forty-seven percent of our workforce living in the basin. It's interesting. I don't, yeah, on the modeling standpoint of like, is fifty percent the right number? I have no idea. If we bump that up to an extra floor with no negative points. Again, I'd like to see, I'd like to see more workforce housing in the basin. The housing team is doing an incredible job. I, I don't think bumping it up an extra foot hurts us at all. And I, I worry about us inefficiently using our land as we build on it and not. Having enough density where it maybe works and doesn't impact sight lines, right? While also walking that delicate line of authenticity and we don't want the town to feel overcrowded, right? And over exceed that basin. But I think in most spots, especially where it's allowed, three stories doesn't negatively impact us. So be okay moving forward with something. Don't know that it's going to move the needle that much, though. Thanks.
Could I just, yeah, just one thing on the carrying capacity? This does not deal with density, so the density still needs to be provided on a project. If you go a story higher, you're still going to have the density, need to come up with the density for that. So I just wanted to make that clarification as we're discussing it now. The town has, at its discretion, could provide density to a private developer, and we certainly do it to all our own projects. And that's a side of that, but I just want to make that clear.
When it doesn't change the, the, the units that we've got in the, in the bank right now, right? It doesn't move that needle at all. Okay, yeah. And that's kind of, I think, the definition of carrying capacity at the moment, right?
Well, I, I think we do have a definition of carrying capacity. It's called the Joint Upper Blue Management Plan. And I think we really, really need to pull that out and revisit it and train ourselves in it. Because I think that's a critically important document that at times gets forgotten. So. Yeah, I'm, I'm, and I appreciate your points, Councilman Rankin. God, I, you know, I mean, it's, yeah, this is a tough one, because we all want, we all want workforce houses. And we all want to partner with, with private developers around it. I, I share Jay's comments around being skeptical of. Fifty percent being enough to incent and, and I think we get below that number. You know, and, and with the effort of trying to incent, then I just don't think the community gets enough. It just, the, the three stories could be very, very impactful in certain land use districts. And so I, I'm in favor of just keeping it the way it is and looking at projects. One at a time and then hopefully we can make them work and there'll be better projects because you have to mitigate the negative point. So.
Yeah, I agree with Jane Dick, so I won't repeat the points, but one thing. To highlight again, that we do have tools, our development agreements to be able to make that choice side by side. And not have this blanket policy where we might have some unintended consequences and true impact to the community. So I'm not in favor of this policy. That being said, I appreciate the time being put into it. And I love it when planning commission brings us things. I'm sorry to not be in agreement with this one. But planning commissioners are the ones that see the code, and I hope you keep highlighting things to bring us.
Marika?
I'm just going to buy myself some time for a second. Is this like an elephant in the room question? Like, do you feel like you need something here before runway goes forward?
No, and, and to the point, runway is probably not going to be. I mean, you know, we run into it in things like the workforce housing, like Vista Verde one and two and Uller Apartments and that. You know, and, and, you know, the three stories where Vista Verde is, is pretty. Not much of an impact, I, I think is, you know, from our perspective, because it's so far back from the highway and that. But of course, that's always site specific, so it, you know, it certainly varies from place to place.
I think at our last meeting, we hypothetically threw around like, that there were some things in the code that we may at some point want to look at in the future. And I, I don't know that this decision has to be made today, so I think I'm going to go with Jay, Dick and Carol.
All right, I agree as well. I think Jay made a lot of good points that, you know, we're trying to. Well, I mean, for me, it's a very big priority for us to do things in a sustainable manner and pretty much all of the. All of the things that you talked about that we got were some form of sustainability. And I feel like this is working the way it is right now, and certainly that people can come to us for a development agreement. But I think until it's not working, we should leave it. But thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you very much, and thank you to planning commission too. All right. Thanks, Mark. So we're on to runway discussion, unit types and ADUs. Another easy one. Welcome.
In my, you can, yeah, pull it a little bit closer, because it. I think we were in front of the council about a month ago, talking about runway. And at that time, we got some feedback from you all in terms of the options that we presented. And you asked us to take a look at a couple of things. One was, you know, what would this look like if we eliminated townhomes? What's going on with insurance relative to the ultimate cost to the buyers? And reconsider ADUs, is it, you know, something we want to continue to explore or not? So since then, we did take a look at an option, which was only single families and duplexes. And the impact of doing that, it did concern us because we really lose density. You know, we go from, you know, what is our preferred plan at five point eight UPA to down to. You know, I think it's about five point two UPA, which is really pretty low. And I mean, we consider it, you know, not efficiently or using the town land at this point where we really need units. You know, that was a concern, just the loss of the units. Probably about sixteen units we would lose. The cost of construction does go up because it does cost more to build a duplex or a single family than it does a town home. You just have, you know, more exterior siding, more roofing, so the costs would go up. And then we potentially lose, you know, what we've always viewed as our lower priced units, which are our townhomes. So that concerns us just from revenue to the project, but also potential loss of. Our Prop one twenty-three funding if we can't hit some lower AMI targets. So I think a recommendation was to stick with the, a plan that still includes all three housing types. But, and that is version, I think it's B or two that's in your packet. We did talk on the issue of HOA and sort of insurance. And from the feedback that we got, you know, a project like the runway in this particular location. Is not really something that the insurers view as a high risk project from wildfire perspective. Clearly, other sort of higher density, maybe big apartment projects on the outskirts of town. Would trigger, you know, some concerns from insurance, and that's the cost issue with potential HOA fees having to cover that. The third thing we sort of looked into since our last meeting was ADUs. And I know there was a little bit of conversation about ADUs are good, ADUs are bad, they're really troublesome. But we came down to sort of, we would like to provide the opportunity for ADUs in this neighborhood. We feel ADUs are a benefit, not only to the homeowner, but also to the community at large, because they provide an additional rental. And, you know, what we're thinking about at this point is that there would be. Some units that would have the ability for the owner to convert some flex space into an ADU if they chose to do that. And, you know, the policies around, does it have to be rented? What's the rental rate? I think we can finalize those or firm those up before our next meeting in February. But we'd like to at least keep them in the mix for now. I think, you know, when you talk about ADUs in a deed restricted neighborhood, it's a different animal than ADUs on market rate units. I mean, our town code does talk about ADUs on market rate units, and it has policies around them. But the policies for ADUs deed restricted neighborhoods, we feel needs to be covered sort of in the deed restriction. And probably is going to be different than the policies around an ADU and market rate unit. So I just think we support them as part of the development at this point. We talked about public outreach and financial implications and the equity lens, and that's sort of covered in our memo. So I think we are here to, to find out if this sort of plan and the, the concept for the unit types. Is consistent with what you're hoping to see in this neighborhoods, that we can move forward and actually get final pricing. And more accurate pricing, because, you know, in, in the past, we have, we've, we've learned that, you know, before we talk pricing, before we talk sale prices. And revenue, we really need to know what the project's going to cost and what really will fit. And you don't know that till you do your civil plan. I mean, we may not land on exactly this number of units. Once we actually put the streets in, do the grading, figure the ride away. You know, that's going to impact ultimately what really fits on this property. And so, you know, we'd like to go forward with an option B, do a civil plan, cost it, come back in February. And see if we're ready to go. So I think we're open for questions, and we'd love to hear from you guys.
Sounds good. Thank you. What questions do we have? Thank you for all that. Sounds like you guys got to the. Bottom of most of our questions from last time.
Comments, questions or both?
I think let's start with, I mean, I have one question if no one else has a question. You want me to go with it?
No, I might, yeah, more of a comment.
I was wondering if you considered Jay's comment about giving Upper Blue Elementary any space? I understand that this park and snow storage that's next to Uller is probably both to break up. Between the two developments and to provide snow storage for both developments. But I'm just wondering if in the interest of not completely. Pinning Upper Blue Elementary in, if we should consider moving those houses or some of the houses somehow to that end. That's, I don't, I don't need an answer today. I'm just wondering if that's a smart thing to do.
You know, we'll put that on the list as we get into the civil, because it's really when we do our civil that. You know, we'll put that on the list as we get into the civil because it's really when we do our civil that we know exactly what that setback's going to be. And, you know, if it does look like, boy, we're just right on that property line. Does that make sense? How do you provide a buffer? You know, I would look at Valley Brook, we have houses right on childcare center and right on the police station, it works. So whether it's too tight or not, I would prefer to see the civil plan and see exactly what that setback is and then we'll know.
Sounds good. Any other questions?
And this may not be relevant at the moment and that's fine, but I'm curious, when you have, I guess, first off, what funding is tied to the AMIs that we're looking for and what AMIs are those?
It's about $2 million, is that the, that grant?
It would be the gap funding right now, so essentially we can get grant funding for anything below 100% AMI. So with income testing, we want to see that buffer rise. So right now, we're looking at about 22 units that we could potentially get gap funding with Prop 123 on right now.
They'd be priced at 100 and income tested.
Well, they'd be priced at what is about 95 now, knowing that 100 is gonna get a little higher as we actually hit the point of being able to say, okay, it's 2028, they're our last source of funding for the townhomes, so we can go after that gap funding, knowing that 100% AMI will probably be higher come three years from now.
And is that because the interest rates are factored in on the AMI costs of the house? And so if interest rates go back down to say 3% or 4% in three or four or five years, does that allow us to sell those 95% AMI homes for a higher price because?
It's really AMI that drives it, the, really the pricing. Our formula has a assumption for interest rate for HOA dues in terms of what actual mortgage you can afford. I think we are using, I see Cory's in the audience, I can't remember what interest rate we're using for the pricing. Yeah, seven. And so the Housing Authority does adjust the affordable purchase price based on interest rates annually?
Yep.
Annually. So if rates go down, that would be fantastic. People will be able to afford more. But yeah, it's basically based on a, an interest rate that gets adjusted over time.
Okay, just one thing I'll, I'll add and I may be talking out of school here, but I believe that Summit County's request for a waiver was trying to include all of Summit County in the need for that waiver for Prop 123 funds. I don't know that they'll actually look at it that way. So just, I think, looking at the potential for a waiver is something we should do, whether or not they'll allow it, especially for a for sale product, I don't know, but we'll take a look at that again.
I, I think where I was kind of being, where this whole thing was going eventually at some point was that it was kind of reverse engineering the unit mix and which, seeing if we could come up with the best concept that you've laid out by saying, how much can the town afford to subsidize this per unit? And then take that and go backwards to see what those AMIs that we have to sell them for is. And if, and to see if they fall in that, in that if, you know, if those will fall into the grant window or not. And so I was just kind of curious if we had kind of taken a look at it that way and to see, and see what, you know, what Dave says that we can afford to subsidize and then what that pretty much puts us at the AMI for our housing target. And if that helps guide us to how many units, you know, even, even the single family and duplex concept is still 30% more units than we were first thinking about on this project. So I, I think that any of the concepts are, are a win for the community and are more than we originally felt for. I was just kind of trying to get an idea if that had been explored.
Yeah, so interestingly enough, when we, we'll be back in February to do more robust pricing exercises with you guys. Because once we get the infrastructure numbers, we can then say, okay, this is the revenue we need to cover this gap and we can kind of play with, what does this AMI level look like? What is this? So we're, we're thinking about bringing like two to three different pricing matrices to, to work through, but that's definitely something we've considered as we've worked through the preliminary pricing. Because it was actually interesting, there is a perfect number there with the townhomes that if you keep it lower, you actually, the amount you would lose is made up with more money from the grants. So there's, there is a mechanism that we're working through.
Great. Thank you for taking a look at it, you'll add it, or me own. That's it. I think that's, yeah. Because I think it's, you know, there's a lot of motion tied up in housing, so sometimes numbers don't lie. Appreciate that.
You said there's more grant money for fewer townhomes?
No, no, there's cheaper townhomes. We can get townhomes cheaper with grant money covering those. So if we, it kind of helps us hit those lower AMIs with the grant money and some other higher priced units to offset those.
Thank you.
Yeah, speaking of the higher priced units, I think it also would be good to have council weigh in on the question, I didn't include this up front, and the deed restriction light question versus full market rate question. Because when we come back, we say, okay, the full cost of this project is kind of exactly what we thought. $270,000 gap per unit, $40 million. We can cover that $40 million, you know, with our pricing, figure out how our pricing fits, even though we really know we want to target that 450 to 680, that's our real, where we want to focus. But also the market rate or deed restriction light give us a whole new option in terms of how to cover that gap. And I don't know if there's a preference from the council on deed restriction light versus market, full market. So another question.
Okay. I just want to say this now so that if people, if everyone else disagrees with me, then you guys know that, not to look into it, but I'm just thinking, if we're only getting about $2 million in grant funding on a $40 million project, I want to know really clearly what the requirements of that grant is because that's not enough money to make any sort of hoops worth it.
The strings.
Does everybody, yes.
Yeah.
And just make sure that Keely helps us really determine what those strings are and whether they're worth it to us. That'd be wonderful.
Well, we have applied for another grant in addition to the 2 million. So that's in process and I think we're going to continue to look at additional grant fundings.
Yeah. Okay. And I support that as long as it's not against our values.
Yeah.
All right, so we have some, now we can go for comments. Did you want to start us off?
Sure, I'm happy to.
You deal with the questions as far as unit makeup and the deed restricted light versus market and what was the other? I guess the ADUs.
Yeah.
And more space.
I, 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 I look at our community and I feel like it's a very diverse community or becoming more diverse. Economically, it's certainly a very diverse community. There's huge need at the lower end and there's robust need at a, at an upper end. And, you know, it's, it's difficult for all sectors of our community to get into purchasing a home. So, you know, there's missing middle and then there's people that without products like this will never have a chance to, to own something. So I'm in favor of the, of the 148, the, the one-third, one-third, one-third. I feel like it, it, it fits our community need most appropriately and most respectfully. Gives many sectors of our community or all sectors of our community, well, we'll say many, the opportunity to, to, to own a, own a home. So I, I, I like that mix. I like the mix of the, of the lower end. And, and it does, it brings a great number. To, to Kelly and Jay's point about Upper Blue, and that, that's gonna be our fifth phase. I, I think the staff needs to move forward on infrastructure planning and pricing. I think we go forward with the project a, as it presented. You know, with the 148 units in that process and probably into the first phase of building. When, when we get into the third, fourth, fifth phase of this or years, you know, we, we, there's going to be more discussions. And if there's issues with Upper Blue, we'll, we'll have a little clearer picture by then, I think, so. But I don't think we want to wait, we'd want to slow this down any further in that process. The ADUs, I like the flexibility of it. I think we have some work to do with, with some of our code around ADUs right now to make them work. They, you know, the code was written for market rate. You know, ADUs being added to market rate units and now we're working with, with ADUs being added to deed restricted units. And I think we need to be thoughtful in that and, and maybe take a look at our code a little and make that work a little better. But I think we plan for it. I think it brings good options, you know, and, and have it be unfinished space that the new property owner can, can do with it what they wish. But we plan a parking pad and, and infrastructure for it. The deed restriction light and the, and, and having full market rate units in here, you know, I think I heard Laurie say this, but I like the ideas, you know, I don't think we're, we need to make that decision now. Yes, you know, Laurie said 270 in that 270 range subsidy per unit. And when you see the data, next meeting or, or the following, when, when the housing department reports out on what we've accomplished in the last year and, and year to date, I think you'll see that that, that's an okay number. However, that 40 million's a big number. I know it's over a period of five years. I, I, I think we need to continue to work hard with our partners to try to sharpen the pencil a bit. And I, I think there's room. I think this is a big enough project and we have smart enough partners and, and motivated and connected enough partners to be able to, to, to trim that number a bit. And we want to work together and we want to be supportive in that process. But I think that process, we really need to encourage to continue. So I think those are my comments. Did I answer the questions?
You did.
Okay.
Who wants to go next?
I'll jump in. I like the buffer you suggested, Kelly, maybe of a little bit of park space, snow storage over by the ball fields there. Maybe kind of offsets the weight of the parking and, or not the parking, but the snow storage and parkland down towards Blue 52. Yeah, that's a thoughtful idea. On the unit type, I like concept B, kind of going through the housing blueprint over the weekend. Kind of mentioned having an offering across the whole price spectrum. This certainly does it. I love the work on the single.
Great with me.
Yeah, on the same page. The, the mix across the single families, I think is fantastic because that's like three levels of houses, which I think is really cool. So nice job there. While I was looking this, and certainly not to derail anything, I kind of was like, do we want to just go with a bunch of single family options in townhomes? But I like concept B. So yeah, unit numbers are good. I like ADUs. I like coming up with a thoughtful way to price those as deed restricted units and also make, make sure they get built as ADUs. Yeah, I think there's a little bit of work and learning to do there. I'm sure you'll get to a good result there that works for the developer and the whole process and the pro forma. And then, yeah, I like having the option to do market rate or deed restriction light on some units to make the, the numbers work better. And certainly agree with Dick that we can wait to determine that till later. So, great job overall.
Thanks. Sure. I also agree with everything Dick said. I like the 148. I like the one-third of each type. I like the different types of mixed single family. I am flexible on the, the snow storage. I would say if it fits where it is, fine. If it fits at Upper Blue, great. And we'll take staff's recommendations on keeping the ADUs.
Deed restricted market light. My tendency is always to, to go toward deed restricted or at least deed restricted light, but I'm not sure. I'm fully committed yet.
Thank you again for all your work on this and thanks for exploring the single family duplex product mix. And I think there's value in looking at that. And I say that because I'm a firm believer that phasing of this project is got, is the most important part, decision that we make, is that if we go out and we throw in cement that we're gonna do 148 units and that we're gonna go from property line to property line and we're gonna do this. There, there's a few things that we sacrifice by doing that. And one of them is the flexibility to easily make changes three years from now when thing, the market factors will have changed. Also, the amount of financial weight that this puts on the town by committing to too much too soon is detrimental. And I think that the, the current interest rate environment makes these houses 30% more expensive than they will be or than they were, you know, if interest rates come down. So I, I'm a firm believer in thinking that, yes, I think we should plan out the staff's recommendation and for the northern section of this parcel with the ability to flex and to see where, where we are a couple of years from now, once we have some infrastructure and once we have some units and once we have some of these other projects online. And perhaps it is most prudent to move to that duplex, single family product mix on that southern half of the parcel. But I, I really think that putting hard decisions in right now is, and, and as respectfully as possible, I think it's short sighted. I think this is a huge project with a huge price tag and taking it slow is probably the best way to go about it, in my opinion. That being said, I would be against any, any proposal that would have market units in this. I think that is a, a terrible look for town as well as very much against everything that we stand for, but if perhaps, you know, if we are to have ADUs on a couple of, uh, single family homes, I think you said 22 perhaps, I would be agreeable to have those units be market light or deed restriction light, which would allow us to have a little bit elevated price point on there that would kind of allow for them to, to develop those ADUs. Yeah, I think that's, that's where I'm at.
And again, thank you for all your work on this. I know this is, we've said it before, this is our last big project where we have full control over what happens here, so we want to make sure we get it right. And the projects that we bring online are the only options for a lot of community members ever to own a home in our community. Thanks for giving us the different unit concepts, general direction. I'm 100% supportive of concept B. Not just the mix of units, what it does to that mixed income community, but also ensuring that we are bringing units online that can meet that lower price point for our community members that need that lower price point. I think we have other tools we can use to get those more expensive units, housing helps, buy downs. We can bring deed restriction lights into the community. We can bring deed restriction lights into the community, so I'm waiting to. Make a decision if I support deed restriction light or not to see how it pencils, but my inclination would be go towards the full. Deed restriction since we have other tools. Otherwise, the eighty use, I appreciate staff's recommendation and would just like. Um in the next step, a little more vetting exactly what it looks like. You know, those conversations still may be had. What else was mentioned? The buffer, I leave it up to the design team to see what makes sense. You mentioned the Valley Brook example. That there's not much space. It's perfectly divided, so I leave it to you all and thanks for helping all of us understand that. As we put the roads in, as we get closer to the numbers, we do have some flexibility with the phasing approach of seeing. What decisions we need to we need to make from there.
Great. Um I also support the hundred and forty eight and. Um the eighty use, I think Dick had a great point that we should be looking at that code, make sure that it applies correctly here. Um I'm not married to the. I'm perfectly fine relying on engineering to understand where snow storage and things should be. I do um agree with Jay that phasing is really important in this project and I know you guys all. Know that better than I do, but I did wanna just mention that. You know, it seems like there's a big block of the cottages and there's a bit bunch of duplexes. All towards that southern end. And so I guess I just wanna make sure that you guys um consider. Kind of getting that. You know, part of the reason that I think this is such a great option is because the unit mix is pretty evenly distributed. And so just in case something did change and we didn't build out the fifth. Um phase for some reason or whatever, I don't can't even imagine what can happen in the future. Um but just wanna make sure that we sort of always have that unit mix that's pretty evenly distributed. Um so might have to tinker with that moving forward, but I understand that a lot depends on. The information we get from. The engineers and those who are doing that planning. Um I would not support any market price housing on this. We spend so much time trying to get market. Units into our deed restricted pool. I think it would be really short sighted to. Um try to fund it that way. I I'm fine looking at different light options. I think it's been. Loaded that maybe there would be a cap on um the percent. Increase and I I would certainly consider that. Um and I do know, but I also know, you know, it's like. I think our average home price right now is two point one million, so people can afford, you know, a lot of expensive house. There are people who can afford an expensive house and still can't afford a market price house, so I think we shouldn't. Underestimate how much some of these single family homes that are um. Brand new can actually be sold for. And I just don't want that first sale for us to lose everything on that first sale, so I just think we should. Um really pay close attention to how much we should be offering those for. And I love, I've really come around to the ADU unfinished option. And I'm um I believe based off these graphics that they're detached. Um and I'm really, really happy about that, so thank you for considering that as an option. Do you guys need anything else from us? I'm looking at the recommendation, unit types, count. Schedule. Go ahead, come on up.
I'd like to ask a question about the process.
You're in control of the process.
Hi, everybody. No, I'm not. Tom Dev is. Lena Scott for the record with Horace Design. Um we had a meeting with um the planning department. Just to talk about the process that we'll need to go through for the neighborhood. And I'm thinking about how that's gonna line up with the meeting in February and wanted to um. Understand council's um comfort level with creating a new master plan for this neighborhood that starts to establish. Um the, you know, that allows for the phasing and the different unit types to all exist, but that gets us to a place so that when we come in with engineering numbers. Were in alignment with planning at the same time. I think that's the last question.
That sound good. I think it's just that they're gonna develop a master plan.
Yeah, obviously it wouldn't get approved. Get your direction in February, but we could start that process, so we're ready to roll if if you guys decide to go with. Starting this project.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
One thing about the um ADUs, um and I know our site plan does show detached. Um garages with eighty use above. Um we may come back when we're talking pricing because that does drive the cost of the eighty use up. As opposed to maybe just having a breezeway that connects them, but they really are connected by a breezeway. Because then we can um save on the plumbing expense and all sorts of things in terms of the development of eighty use, so they may. Ultimately come in with some sort of breezeway attachment as opposed to being completely detached. That'll be a pricing.
To rain on my parade, huh? Like to say that having them completely detached is what gets them rented to people they don't know. When they're attached, they will be used as offices or teenage kids bedrooms. And so I do think there's value. In having them detached and there's certainly value to the renter.
Well, look at that as we.
Suzanne Allen Sabo with Neighborhood Crafters, Dick knows that. He's. Above his garage. Um I just wanted to say that the reason we moved that snow storage to the north end. Was just a conversation with engineering and our whole team regarding kids and walking to school. And all that equipment right there, right next to the school. So that was the only reason we moved it. Um happy to move it back, but um just as an FYI.
Yeah, and I mean, I was also looking at this and, you know, it it does go up a bit. It's like a giant field. Upper Blue has a giant field there, so it's not like they have zero options, but. But I thought it was a good point of Jay's. Anything else?
That's great. Um we will be back. February, end of February, I should. We have pricing and then we can really talk numbers, sale price. What kind of revenue do we need to generate to have a reasonable subsidy for this project over multiple years? So. We'll be looking forward to that conversation in February.
With eighty use, so.
Yeah, we'll look at both.
For considering all of the input, it feels like you guys did a really thorough review of. Um all the questions and concerns that council has brought up and we really appreciate that and hopefully it makes it. The best project that it can be.
Well, I think we have definitely learned we need to take our time planning these projects and we've we've run into problem after problem when we. Move forward based on just a schematic drawing, because once you convert that to a real drawing. With engineering standards, it looks totally different. So we do view this as still part of our due diligence and our initial pre-development planning, so.
Understood.
Yeah, we'll be back in February.
Okay, sounds great.
Around then.
Thank you. Thanks, Alina. All right, we are, oh Julia, it's up for employee generation. I think we're gonna do a great job with this today, Julia. You can really beat it up.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor Town Council. So I can go into as much presentation or as little as you'd like on this.
Walk us through it. I think it's helpful for us to all be starting at the same spot.
All right. So um. Does the employee generation policy, um which is policy twenty four A in our development code. Uh social community is what it's actually referred to as in the code. And it's again, one um tool in our toolbox for achieving housing in the community. Um this policy really gets housing from um businesses that are generating employees. It gets a portion of those employees generated um by either providing actual housing units. Or um fee and lieu, so just as a brief overview. With our past discussions that we've had with town council. Um we have talked about um the Nexus study, which you all adopted. So we have a new Nexus study um that went into a employee generation um rate table in our code. And that covers our um Breckenridge specific um businesses. Um that were surveyed, so based on their use and their employee generation. So we've got that all settled. That study was done by EPS. Um then we have talked about the mitigation percentage that I mentioned, so that's gonna be what. Um percentage the businesses would provide of those employees generated according to that table. Um that is currently thirty five percent in our code and previous council discuss discussions. Um sort of lean toward maybe keeping that at thirty five percent. Um of course, on all of these things we previously discussed, we didn't settle on an actual decision, kind of wanted to bring it all back together. So um just note that as well. Uh the square footage per employee that goes into the calculation um is three hundred and fifty square feet. That's in our current code. And that again was generally voiced uh support for by town council previously. In October. Um we also discussed a potential small business exemption. In October and we went over a couple of different scenarios and um really kind of poked holes in what could happen. In those different scenarios. And um with that, you know, there wasn't a great exemption. Um that we came up with and we couldn't find one um in any other communities that had similar policies. Also, um EPS, our consultant that did the Nexus study for us and has worked on. These type of um policies throughout other communities also did not recommend a small business exemption for various reasons. A lot of it watering down um the policy itself, for example. And there are potentially other options to get to. Um maybe providing some assistance to small businesses. Um so that that would maybe be something we would wanna look at outside of the development code. So I'll just note that as well. Um so new discussion, things that we haven't covered yet would be um onsite mitigation. Um so in the policy, if you have a new development or a demo rebuild. You're required to provide a hundred percent of the the required mitigation onsite. Um the changes of intensity of use, so that's your existing businesses that, let's say, you have a retail. Space and a restaurant's going in, so you're increasing the number of employees generated per that table. Um that has to be provided. We only would look at the difference between retail and restaurants, just to clarify. Um and take the thirty five percent of that and do our calculation based on that. But um twenty five percent of that mitigation. Um generated would be required to be onsite. For those in changes of intensity of use. So in kind of re-reviewing and re-analyzing this policy again, that was originally adopted in twenty twenty. Um there are exemptions that are listed in the code that if you meet one of these exemptions, then um you could provide. Housing offsite or uh fee and lieu. And. One of them is if you're inside the conservation district, so that one's pretty easy. The other ones are fairly. Can be fairly subjective and are based on a planning commission decision. And that can be fairly difficult for a business to navigate, especially if you're a smaller um in a smaller space. Um smaller spaces outside the conservation district do exist, Airport Road, Main Street Station, Village. Um areas like that. So we do have commercial businesses that are smaller outside of the conservation district. So what we wanted to look at was, do we want to um require a hundred percent? Two things, breaking these out. The one hundred percent mitigation for the new businesses. New construction or demo rebuilds and then the twenty five percent for the smaller businesses. And there are benefits to providing a hundred percent onsite. Um you know, there's less vehicle miles traveled, less commute time for the employees. Um but there are benefits to the business and the or the developer um based on economy of scale. So also things like maybe the uses aren't compatible. That's that's one of the things in the exemptions. But again, kind of subjective to reviewing that. So. So one of the um. Things we wanted to look at was just, do we wanna allow for a consolidated uh approach offsite? If we left the code as is, how we would deal with that and how we have dealt with that in the past would be development agreement. Um so it doesn't mean the door is closed for them to provide, you know, a full housing building. You know, deed restriction building offset, but. But again, there's some some variables there. Um the other question, um and if we did that offsite, we would wanna put some parameters like. In Upper Blue or something like that. Um the second question in there is, you know, should there be a modification to the twenty five percent? Required onsite for those um increasing intensity of use and um. Those are gonna be your smaller spaces that already are existing, so those are gonna be your, in theory, sort of your smaller businesses. So there there's an, I think, argument there for maybe providing some relief to that provision of the twenty five percent. For intensity of use um being provided onsite. Um so there's that and I don't know if we wanna talk about the do this section by section um. Ellie, or if you would like to me to go over all of it and then come.
I think we could do this section by section. You've done such a good job of laying this one out. Do people um wanna talk about? Yes, onsite mitigation, hundred percent and twenty five percent. I feel like it is too different, like. If we say yes to one, we don't necessarily have to say yes to both, maybe. Does anyone have clarity that they wanna kick us off with? Whether they wanna require onsite mitigation or not.
I have an idea I'll throw out there. I I think you bring good points to. Not try to force that down everybody's throat onsite, but there are benefits to it at times, I agree. So what if we didn't require it, but we offered an incentive for maybe one or two positive points. For those that decide to do it on one site. Just a con- conceptual idea.
We could do that. I mean, this is an absolute policy, so we could break that out into our relative policy, so we could write it that way.
It's a conceptual idea.
It's possible.
Yeah, I mean, you know, kind of. Building some incentives into this, I. You know, because I think there are people that find this to be a punitive policy and. And uh I don't, I, you know, I, we we hear from community members. Fairly often that that feel like we're spending too much on housing. It should be the responsibility of small business and. Et cetera. I don't agree with that, but I do think there. I don't agree with that, but I do think there is an element of responsibility in small business to this. And so, so I'm, I'm very supportive of the policy, but yeah, I don't think it hurts to throw up. You know, throw a carrot against them.
I think that's interesting, but what about those cases where we find that that site isn't suitable for housing? So I'm just talking through with you, but what if we end up giving positive points for a place that isn't the most suitable for housing? I don't know. Julie, what are your thoughts on? Idea, because I like it, but I'm trying to think through.
Well, we could have some criteria to earn the positive points, eliminate those where it's not. You know, you hate to make it more complicated than these.
Yeah, I would have to think about it a little bit more on how that, how that would best work. Right now, now, yeah, not working onsite, not being compatible onsite is one of the exemptions. So if something like that sounds like the way you want to go, we can work on the language.
Right. Anybody else for how they?
I like the incentive concept. I think that's thoughtful, right? As we run out of land and is there a way to kind of incent folks? And positive points is certainly one. For me, I don't have any, as long as the house, like as long as we're getting housing, that's valuable, right? Like, so to me onsite, offsite, not super important, but I like being efficient with, hey, if Kentucky unit here and there, that's helpful.
I have a question that I don't think I asked out loud last time, but I did. You can remind me what we talked about. What, so we talked about this a lot with like square footage and physical space. What about people who are starting a business that doesn't have a physical space? So I'm going to start a personal training business, but I'm going to go to your house and train you. And I'm going to hire Jay and Scott to work for me as employees, but I don't have a physical space. Am I still subject to? The employee mitigation policy?
No, because it's based on square footage. The other thing I'll just mention is there's an agreement option too. And that could be in place of the incentive piece.
I'm thinking smaller.
Like the, the smaller spaces. Is a bit burdensome for the smaller spaces to like try to navigate the development agreement process.
And costly.
Jay, do you have a thought on onsite?
Other than, you know, the onsite mitigation definitely has its drawbacks. With the opportunity at cost of a dwelling onsite versus more, say, business area. To, to generate revenue and then, you know, the affordability part, like if you're to, wherever the, this business lay, lies. It's probably going to be more costly on a per square footage basis. But, you know, understanding the, the impotence for it. And the fact that we want, it's a sustainability perspective, right? We don't want people to have to drive from there. So, Jay, I really think that you have an interesting perspective. And I think whether that's the right way or not, I think that's the thought process that we should be doing is not penalizing people. For not being able to do it onsite, but trying to do, use more of a carrot those stick.
You, you bring another good idea to mind, Jay. I mean, maybe it's multipliers based on AMIs. You know, you make it really affordable, you, because there's developments that need a couple of points. I think there could be a lot of unintended consequences. The concept we need really think out.
Okay, so mostly we can just, it sounds like everyone is on board with looking at options. To allow for offsite employee mitigation. And then we'll just let you think through whether it's possible to incentivize those, either through points or some other way. Or if that just gets too complicated. But I do think that there's plenty of support for considering offsite employee mitigation.
And that's for the new construction and for the smaller.
Correct, everyone? Yeah.
So conversions and new construction.
Yes, so. So you want to go on to fee and lieu?
Yes. For the fee and lieu, we had two issues here. One's the methodology of the fee and calculation, and it's extremely complicated. It is defined in our code in a chart. Done in twenty twenty and it's based on a two-person household. Making eighty percent AMI at that time. And it makes assumptions on the mortgage, an affordable mortgage rate. And then versus what the eighty percent AMI mortgage rate is, what the interest rate is. What the insurance is, all sorts of variables go into this chart. And it is not something I would recommend we continue doing. And so going, switching gears and methodology to just the cost of construction and units. And looking at the towns, Akili's suggestion, we went with the town's last ten projects. Of deed restricted units. And it was extremely close with the, the two projects were like two dollars apart. That were right there in the middle. And so feel pretty good about this number of three ninety-one per square foot. So that's a hundred and seven dollar increase from the twenty twenty number and the change in methodology. And that does not include land cost. So true cost would be more. So I just want to note that.
Was that based off of projects that did, were not hooked up to natural gas?
They are, I mean, let's see, well, Stables projected numbers in there too. I mean, this is the median. So we are not taking an average. So like Stables is, you know, on the high end. We didn't count that one. So it really comes down to, I think it's the, the blue fifty-two in here on landing cost.
So, I mean, sorry to jump in here, but I hope we never hook another workforce housing unit up to natural gas. I don't know how others feel, but that being the case. I think if we're doing true cost of what employee housing really costs. I guess not everything is built new.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to put the, I mean, we could do an analysis and put the land costs under it. But some of these, I mean, people may not be building a brand new unit on.
Right.
You know, raw piece of land.
Right. But I mean, ten, the last ten projects, that goes back to what year?
Don't have the year, but it goes back to Pinewood two.
That just seems.
That wasn't that long ago.
Good point, but I also think we need to be a bit conservative in this number. Because this, this is a burden on people expanding or developing a new business. So I'm, I know we're probably going to a lower number than you want and I, your, your rationale is solid. I agree with it. But in this case, I, I, I think a lower number is better. So I, I like the number that you've got, Julie.
We do want it to make, I feel like it's pretty defensible too. Like the more conservative we are, the less likely there would be a challenge too. And I think these are pretty solid numbers. I don't know if Keely wants to weigh in, but we've discussed as well. So that's, that's our recommendation for the methodology. The second one, issue is the actual application of the fee and lieu. So right now, it's when you get, when you have a fraction of an employee. So less than one employee, you can pay a fee and lieu. You know, that does become more burdensome when you're in a, a smaller space business. For example, and you have to go purchase a unit. And maybe, maybe like you just opened or you, you know, you're new to town or whatever. So that, and just taking assessment of this and our housing programs, as you know. Both new construct, new construction wise and our housing helps, our buy downs, our private partnerships. That we have are have just advanced so much since twenty twenty, frankly. That now we're able to use the fee and lieu so much more effectively than I think we were able to before. We have so many more opportunities. And we also have so many limited market opportunity for people to buy appropriate. Units to buy them down or construct units. Especially when you're talking about those smaller space businesses. So we wanted to have council just consider increasing that application for over. A fraction of an employee. And I just threw out five employees. And up to, you know, negotiation. But I just was thinking, along those lines was thinking, you know, if you had a larger retail space and you converted it into a restaurant. For example, you could be generating five or more employees that you would have to mitigate. So. But again, it's completely sort of a number that was just selected.
So I did. Can I clarify something really quick? I'm sorry to interrupt. When you say the calculation of up to five employees to be mitigated, do you mean like up to the calculation of five? Meaning fifteen and then when you take the thirty-five percent, it's five? Or do you mean five employees in which you have to mitigate thirty-five percent of?
I was thinking the, the total to be mitigated of five employees.
Thank you.
But, I mean, you can see it both ways in here. So example A would be, you know, mitigating one point seven employees. And so then that resulting fee using the three hundred and ninety-one dollars of methodology. Resulting in, in that two hundred and thirty, thirty-two thousand six forty-five number. And then example B would be, say, you have a large business. And let's say they took advantage, if they took advantage of that five employee fee and lieu. They would still be providing units too. So you can see that calculation in there, fee and lieu of six eighty-four thousand. And then you've got the sixteen thousand three hundred and eighty square feet that they'd have to provide as well. So they'd have, they, they could do both in the way we were proposing here. So that could be how that would lay out in that case. The thing I would point out is that it's most valuable for the town to get units. And square footage. So we want to put, I would recommend putting a cap on the fee and lieu amount. As far as number of employees that it could apply to versus just opening it up to everything. Because although we are able to utilize the fee and lieu monies that would come from that, you know. Getting the units are more valuable. So that's why the cap is recommended. So with that one, we had the two questions for the council regarding the methodology. And the increasing the application to the fee and lieu to five employees or some other number. We can come back to that with, with the draft and discuss it further, but.
All right. So any questions first? Okay. Does anyone want to start us off on changing to the cost of construction? And then also the. And the feeling question. And capping at five.
I can start. I thought, Julie, this section was super clear. I think taking that updating and making that new number conservative makes sense. And I think we've discussed before about how town has a dedicated staff. And use these dollars to go further. So if a business has more than one employee, I think it's fine. If they pan to the, pay a fee and lieu. Was there one more?
The five, capping it at five. Yeah, so fee and lieu up to five and then.
Yeah, that one was a little tougher. I would take staff's recommendation. We don't want someone to mitigate. We'd rather them make, bring those units online. So I'm, I'm fine with the five employees to be mitigated.
I, I agree to each point.
Rika?
Nothing to add right now. Steve?
Agree with both points. I think simplifying the calculation by updating to what it actually costs to have a unit. Makes great sense and is very defensible, as Julia points out. Limiting it, how, we have such good people working with the acquisition of units. That come available. And if we have more money to buy those units. I still see that as a win-win for us. So I agree, Julie, we want the units. But if we have in our, in our pot, the ability to go buy down units that come online. Because we have more money, because people put it in our pot, I wouldn't necessarily limit it to five. But if we start out with five and see how it works, I'm good with that.
I think the methodology and the efforts to come up with a thoughtful number on point. I think when I look at two hundred and thirty-two grand to add nine hundred square feet for a successful small business. I'm totally lost at that point and not a fan of the policy. It just seems onerous and negatively impacts our brand, our authenticity. And I think you're going to get nobody doing it. So against it.
I like the methodology. I think the numbers where it should be. I, I was thinking three or four, but I can easily go to five as the cap.
I agree with all that. I agree with what Steve said. About maybe starting at five and then seeing if that's really something we need to be doing in the long run. Because we're probably the only ones who actually can build workforce housing. But understanding that there are units out there that can be bought down. I just think that's a complex project, process for a lot of people. You guys are so good at that. They're so. So it sounds like you have support for both of these things. Okay?
Small business exemption. Can we talk about that a little bit?
Sure. I mean, so just to remind everyone, the last time we talked about small business exemption.
Very problem that.
Well, we, and we just came back to that there are appropriate ways to help small businesses and not necessarily through this part of the code. And so I think unless there's some new information, maybe we don't need to revisit it now. Beyond saying we really want to continue to look at how we should be supporting our small businesses.
I have a semi-new thought.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think it's something that needs to be done. I know Todd could speak eloquently about how important it is. And we all know businesses that probably aren't going to expand because this is onerous. Where it, you know, it's just, it's expensive to do. And so I think it's an important piece to really look at and tackle in the near future. I, I agree with our discussion at the last meeting that, that this workforce generation policy is not the place to do it. It's just too difficult to do. However, I think we should embark on parking as, as our next discussion points. To help take some of the burden off our smaller businesses. take some of the burden off our smaller businesses where who try to either convert use or, or expand their business. Because I, I, I think the points that Todd would make if he were speaking, and I think we've heard, are, are really good points. And, and I think we have some really successful, um, important businesses to our brand and our community that would like to expand. And they, they're not gonna be able to afford it, you know, when you have parking and water and sewer taps and, and, um, and employee generation. But I think parking to me is the, the, the easy, easy is probably the wrong word. But it's, it's probably the place to look to offer relief in this policy to, to the smaller businesses is my thought. And I think we should embark on discussions of that sooner as opposed to later.
Yep, and I know we agreed on that last time as well, so I'm sure that's coming. All right.
I have one other thing, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We had the challenges piece to this policy.
That's what I was all writing. We can move forward. Go ahead.
So the, um, current policy allows for the numbers to be challenged, um, in the table that we referred to earlier um, by incoming applicants. And they just have to provide competent evidence. Now, the town is able to, um, hire a third party. But the applicant essentially provides one, you know, whatever evidence they wanna produce and, um, goes to planning commission with that. And, um, the planning commission makes a decision if that's adequate or not. And so I did hear previously from a council, um, discussion that maybe that should be tightened up a little bit. Um, so took a stab at that and, um, kept the third-party verification ability. Um, but you try to more hone in on have your, um, proof of employees generated be in a resort area or in Summit County or based on your, you know, past, um, experience that you can produce as well. And, but it is pretty difficult to get into more detail without getting into real personal business that we may, we probably, I wouldn't recommend us getting into. So I wanted to get opinions on kind of what we laid out here, if you had suggestions. Um, especially as, um, we have business owners on here, if you had suggestions on how that might work as well.
Okay. Um, thoughts on what they've laid out, what Julia's put in here as far as the challenges language goes?
I have a question. Julia, are there third-party, um, people out there that could accurately determine whether the argument holds weight or not? Or, you know, is justified or is legitimate?
Well, I mean, there are people who businesses or consultants who come up with parking counts, um, and traffic counts, things like that. So we would probably utilize companies like that. And I don't know if you have another suggestion, but, I mean, there are consultants out there that could do it.
Yeah, I mean, there are other areas in the county that, um, have required employee generation, you know, analysis and have utilized outside consultants for that, so they do exist.
It does also take another eye on the project that's outside of, you know, staff and the planning commission or the council.
It's an imperfect, uh, science, yeah.
And I don't wanna be the judge.
Yeah.
You know, my, my concern with the, with the challenges is that, you know, you have someone that comes up and they're like, I'm gonna open up a restaurant and it's gonna be fully automated. There will not be a, you know, there'll be one manager and other than that, it's gonna be the waiters, it may be, uh, robots, the cooks are robots. And, and it's like, wow, well, that's a, that's no, that's one employee, okay, you know, you see that. And then six months down the line, all the robots are in the dumpster and there's, you know, fifteen, uh, people serving tables and cooking and everything like that. And it's like that bait and switch that I'm concerned about being taken advantage of in a situation like this and what that looks like. And, you know, that's kind of an outlandish example, but, eh, not really, right? And, and so, you know, especially when I was up at, um, what was it, the, uh, the overlook the other day? And they have these checkouts that are, you know, completely unmanned. Where you just put the stuff there, zap it and they charge you whatever. And so you just wonder as automation comes, um, what is, what happens to the study? And what happens to the excuses or not the excuses, the rationalizations that you don't need employees? And, and so I think this is really important, this section, that we, that we define it in a way that protects against the bait and switch, but also realizes where technology is going. And the fact that there will probably be a decrease in employee, um, in business over, over time. And so this is not something that's gonna happen tomorrow, but I think it's something we need to be aware of and be thoughtful.
Do we audit the number of employees? I mean, I know we've had this conversation lots of times about like, when, uh, you know, proposal comes in and it's half t-shirt shop, half restaurant. And then somebody from town goes in and it's like, there's no t-shirt shop, but the whole place is a restaurant. It, do we have a way to?
Yeah, and those, those specific cases where we have checked on things, yes. The difficulty of going back and checking, because we thought about that. Is that you would have a business owner and let's say they got approved for, to mitigate three employees. And they hired a fourth employee. And we went in and got tax records or whatever, and they have four employees. Are we going, then it would be upon us to either extract that fee for that fourth employee or housing for that fourth employee. Or what would happen, would we shut the business down? I mean, so there's some, that's why I don't wanna get too deep, like, I don't know. I wouldn't recommend getting too detailed in that because as a town, I, or as a staff, I'm not sure that that's what we wanna do.
Yeah, or.
My concern is the bigger projects, you know, that are, you know, big developments with restaurants and, and, um, you know, meant lots of rooms and lots of departments and seemingly lots of employees, but they come in with a small number. And, um, justify it with a lot of stuff that, you know, we don't know, you know? And, um, and it's hard, I mean, yeah, I guess you could try to audit payroll records, but that's difficult. I mean, it's not like you're just gonna walk in and count, you know, cause these are massive projects. And, and then, then we're getting into a lot of, but we could lose twenty employees in a situation like that. And, um, that would be really unfortunate. So I, I guess more, you know, we were kind of focused on the little ones. And now I'm trying to refocus back on, on the bigger ones.
And we could, instead of saying at the town at its discretion, which we have not hired a third-party consultant for the challenges that we've had. I mean, we could just say we're going to. And that is part of our process, yeah, and they would, they would pay for that. Um, and so then there would be another layer automatically built in to this system. Um, that would hopefully.
My concern is when we put the burden on the applicant to hire and pay for the consultant. We almost always find the consultant that agrees with the applicant, so.
Yeah, well, how, how this is written is that the town would hire the consultant and the applicant would pay for it.
Okay, I like that.
Um, so we could just go ahead and instead of as an optional type of thing, which we haven't utilized. We could just say it's going to happen and that then that might be less challenges too if if it is going to be pretty iffy if they're trying to get away with something. Maria, um.
Just curious on Julie's take on language here and what is the best route to, what, what's best practice? Um, to kind of accomplish what we're looking at is make, make challenges accessible to where, where necessary, but, uh, you know, a high enough, uh, proof of burden that it's not happening on every application.
I think Julia's, I like Julia's language. I mean, we, she and I went over that and I think it is, I agree, there's sort of a rabbit hole that you could really go down here. And I don't know that that serves anybody's best interests. You could have a whole staff of people following up on employee counts, right? And monitoring that and that doesn't, I don't know that that is really accomplishing what the town wants to accomplish. I mean, that's up to you guys to say, to whether or not, you know, that's really your call. But, um, I think it's something where we wanna provide people an avenue. Um, but also, you know, make it a high bar, like you said. Um, so I think having the town be the one that hires the consultant, the applicant pays for it. You know, we look at the different, and it seems like this is gonna happen. I, because we already have numbers for certain types of, like, businesses, right? Yeah, so this is really only, we're only talking about situations where someone has a unique business that doesn't fit into the, um, you know, it doesn't fit or isn't easily comparable to the categories that we already have.
Or when they question what our NEXA study says, which often happens on the bigger ones, almost always happens on the bigger ones.
There might be that back and forth, right?
Cause I agree with you, I think enforcement's gonna be very difficult and I think we wanna do our best to get it right first time.
All right, so do people support Julia's new language of we would hire a third-party consultant?
Just to clarify, does that mean we're getting rid of one, two and three? And it'll say the town will hire an independent third-party consultant?
I would keep the other ones.
Okay.
I mean, that would be my suggestion.
And then say the town may hire a third-party.
No, I think she's saying would.
I think we say we would.
Okay.
If to address the concern of people taking advantage of it and make it a little bit more difficult to make the challenge.
Got it.
It's sort of like asking for a variance to the policy in a way.
I think they have to understand that there's gonna be skin in the game if they wanna challenge this. Say, okay, here's your challenge and we're gonna meet that with our own expert.
I'll throw out one thing that I can just foresee. I can foresee a very, a business going into an extremely small space, like maybe a coffee shop conversion. Saying now I have to pay for this consultant, you know, you know? So there's also that flip side.
But they don't have to pay for the consultant if they agree with the third-party report that we already commit had.
The women that's in our code. Right, the employee, the existing employee generation.
Correct, and we did.
Did buy.
Hopefully fix those numbers in the table so that they accurately reflect Breckenridge. So hopefully we won't see as many challenges. Just wanted to.
Okay, oh.
No, I'm just, I guess I'm, I, I can follow up later. I'm just confused why we would have one through three if four is maybe mandatory to all challenges. But maybe.
One through three gives them their basis for challenge. And then four is just the, the skin in the game if they choose to use one, two, three. You know, if the consultant agrees with what they're saying, then it's all based on one, two, three. And they get a variance.
Who gives the consultant information to analyze that?
Yeah, honestly, the town could say, okay, if you wanted to. If that, if one, two, three come in and it's a unique new business and
That's where I wanna be careful.
You guys say, oh, okay, we're persuaded, we're not gonna spend the money.
The good thing about always using a consultant is that they didn't develop the numbers in the first place. And so it's not really their numbers to go back to compare. And so it's nice to have a consultant who does the same, uses the same, you know? They looked at several different, um, businesses that are similar, maybe in a different community or maybe, I don't know how they would do it if it's a new one. But anyway, having that consultant provide the numbers, I feel like is most similar to what we did for all of the other businesses in town.
Maybe we write it a little bit different, so the one through three are what you can provide to make your challenge. And we will hire a third-party. So instead of it being one, two, three, four, number four is separate, it's just a.
Right.
These are your things you can challenge on and to verify that we're going to hire a third-party and you're gonna pay for it.
Right. Everybody all right with that? Okay. Public outreach?
So the, um, thought process behind this was to sort of get the buy-in from council on the, on these things so that we could maybe, well, most of these are gonna be new businesses, right? That are gonna have most of the impact. Um, but there will be some that maybe are thinking of expansion, for example, that are already in town. And so we could do some outreach to existing businesses. Um, and just say, hey, this is, this policy is coming into effect, but it's only affecting new businesses. Or if you're expanding into different space and can, or changing the use in a space. Um, so it's not gonna apply to that many existing businesses, but we could go ahead and do some outreach. And I will, maybe through, I could talk to the BTO and see if we can put something in there. Download or I don't, it's difficult to.
Necessary, because I think everyone knows to start a new business, to expand a business or a change of use requires a business license. And this is just all part of that process and that they know they're gonna have to go through. So do an outreach, I just, it's a little complicated of a policy. And I just think we're begging for, um,
Controversial.
Miss, yeah, people misunderstanding it and just creating a lot of angst, that's just not necessary. But that's my thought.
Maybe there's, I mean, I think it's respectful to maybe reach out to those who we know who've already come in to talk to us and are still considering it or have been considering it in the very recent past. Just to let them know, here's where we've landed for now. And, um, I'm just wondering if as part of that process, we should, I mean, it'd be really nice to deliver this message with some of the um, helpful ways that we'd like to, you know, um, meet them. And so I'm a little bit worried about just delivering this news as, um, a potential negative impact when we do intend to have, um, some benefits as well. So I'm wondering if we can wait on the timing until we have a little bit more information about parking or wherever else we choose to go with some helpful insight. I mean, and this has been, you know, employee mitigation has always been, or hasn't always been, but has been required um, in the recent past, so it feels like maybe that would be all right.
Yeah, that's fine. And, and for those business, businesses that we have spoken with about expansion or conversions, their numbers did go down in that NEXA study and on that table, so.
That's good.
Okay.
I think you did a really, really fantastic job of listening. I think you did a really, really fantastic job of listening to all the comments from the last few receptions and boiling this down for us. Thank you very much for.
And I took up all your time until your sex session, so five forty-five exactly. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to go into executive session.
Yep.
Do we need to come back out and into?
I don't think so.
Open session?
Yeah, I don't think you'll need to come back out in an open session unless there's some decision that.
Expect to make any decision.
Yeah, so I think we can tell the public.
Then close the open session and then we go into.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anything else before?
No.
All right. Look at how nervous she is over there. So we're closing the work session, we're going to go into executive session.
Yep, can I get a motion under twenty-four, six, four, O, two, four, F? To discuss personnel matters, specifically the annual review of the town manager.
So moved.
All right, council member Gerard. Sade?
Yes.
Council member Rankin?
Yes.
Council member Carlton?
Yes.
Council member Page? Council member Beckerman?
Yes.
Mayor Owens, yes. The time is now seven o'clock. I'm going to call the town council regular meeting for Tuesday, December tenth to order. Start with roll call, please Helen.
Marika Page.
Here.
Dick Carlton. Steve. Steve Gerard. Carol Sade.
Here.
Jay Beckerman. Todd Rankin.
Present.
Mayor Kelly Owens.
Here. Let's see. Is it okay if I change the agenda now or should I wait to change the agenda?
We should probably wait.
Okay, I'll follow the, I'll follow the instructions. Approval of the minutes. Everyone okay with the town council minutes for November twenty-six, twenty twenty-four? Any changes? Welcome, Dick Carlton. You're now here.
We'll show in the minutes.
All right. The minutes stand for November twenty-sixth, approval of the agenda.
I don't have any changes. We need to remove the legislative item to approve the grant. For.
Resolution number twenty-three.
Number twenty-three for the Colorado Parks and Wildlife Department.
All right, sounds good. So can I add something here?
Sure.
All right. I, it has, it has been brought to our attention that this is Rick Holman's second last meeting. Second time around. And I just wanted to say, we have loved working with you, all of us up here without exception and many of the staff. Many, not all, I'm not going to talk about everyone. But we wish you all the best and hope that you have a wonderful, wonderful vacation schedule planned with Holly. And just wanted to thank you for coming and being our special projects guy and all of us still have. Your cell phone number, so don't change it. And we look forward to having you just come up on social visits as often as you want to. But we will miss you and thank you so much for everything that you did for this town. Now you can go. He did not want to stay for that. Thanks, Rick. All right. Communications to council, now is the time for public comment, non-agenda items only, there's a minute time limit, please. This is anything that's not, if, you're welcome to come up if it's not on the agenda. Are you talking about something that's not on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, come on forward and go ahead and state your name for the record, please.
My name's Frank Mason. I live at nineteen Fletcher Court in the town of Breckenridge. I'm here to talk to you about your nonsensical dark sky legislation. Since I only have three minutes, I will focus both on the uneven application of said ordinance. And the unfriendly bullying exhibited by my town of Breckenridge. As you may have gathered by my address, I live in the Highland subdivision. The streetlights in the Highland subdivision are probably a hundred times brighter than any of the lights in my house. The streetlights are on three hundred and sixty-five nights a year, mine maybe ten nights a year. Yet, the streetlights, which are owned by apparently XL Energy, aren't being treated the same by the town as my lights are. I've been told that the town is in negotiations with XL Energy to get them changed. And by negotiations, I'm assuming that Breckenridge is probably going to subsidize what they want to do. Otherwise, they wouldn't have said no and then Breckenridge is now going to try and facilitate that. My question is, when I say uneven application of the ordinance, why aren't you helping me? I pay taxes to you guys. Why, why does Breck, why does XL Energy get preferential treatment? Why don't you help the residents instead of XL Energy? Why do you instead send out a letter after a town person comes, takes a picture of a light on my property? And then says, and I'm reading this directly from the letter that you all people sent. The town will conduct inspections of all properties for compliance and will initiate. Enforcement actions with property owners who have failed to comply. Now, I, I call that bullying. That's bullying in my estimation. Fortunately, on the way over here, I didn't get hit by a bird that had crashed into one of our high-rise buildings. On the way home, I will try to drive with my headlights off so I don't disturb any of them. And I will be watching to see what kind of a deal XL Energy gets from the town of Breckenridge. In closing, I would just like to say there are two things about Breckenridge that I've observed. One good and one bad. The good news is you all collect a lot of money, you've got a lot of money. The bad news is you've got a lot of money.
Thank you very much, Frank. Thanks for taking the time. Please don't drive with your headlights off. But we will take your comments very seriously and we are going to continue forward with our dark sky initiative, but we appreciate your input and we'll consider it. All right, any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. We're going to get an update from Breck Tourism Office, Lucy Kay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you Helen for checking the mic. I'll start off with some lodging data. This is from Key Data, which now has been cleaned up. The numbers I'm going to quote. Do not include BGB, that is still in the works, so that will happen, but this is apples, apples to apples as we've had in prior years. For the Thanksgiving holiday weekend, room nights were up nine percent, which I think probably everybody felt that. The Christmas holiday this year, we're defining it from December twenty to January twelve because the holiday is on a Wednesday. So we get a longer, we generally get more holiday room nights when it, the Christmas and New Year's fall midweek. So that currently for that window of time, the twentieth through the twelfth, we're up four percent in room nights, although ADR is down and we're seeing that ADR is down for the whole season so far. Winter season as a whole, room nights are up four percent. We've got about half of the business on the books that we'll, that we'll have for the whole year. And most of the season is favorable in terms of like where the room nights fall, it's December and January that are a little light, but. Feb, March, April, you know, that's looking way out, they all look pretty favorable. Lodging revenue as a whole. Is looking four percent down right now and I always ask Bill to look now at Colorado versus out of state so we can see, is it a revenue? Like, is it just ADR or is it a mix in Colorado versus out of state? But both, both of those segments are down. So again, room nights up, revenue down, we're about halfway through the booking cycle. So any questions on that?
Lucy, do you have, with length of stay shortening by a half a day or a day on average? What implication does that have to town? Will there, will there be more of a dip midweek or is it, does it impact town in any way?
You know, there, there will be, Jay, it's a little hard to say exactly what that is. I mean, if it's a night off of out of state. You know, that, that would have more of a financial impact than if the Colorado market is coming for two days versus three, it's just a little bit hard to isolate that one by itself. It's never good when it's down. I mean, we'd rather have people, you know, staying longer, it's few returns in the properties and things like that, it's just better, better operationally that way. Let's see, so that, that's kind of what's happening locally. We just got some data from Future Partners, which is a national. Survey that we've been quoting in here a lot. It's the four thousand travelers, they survey them every two weeks. Good news there, even though in the last month overnight leisure travel was down a little bit, and again, this is national. Looking forward, people are saying that they plan to travel more often in the next twelve months and spend more money. The spend is really interesting, a little counter to what we're seeing in ADR. But it's up, they're quoting fifty-seven, five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars per trip versus five thousand, so about thirty-two percent more. So maybe it's just coming a little bit more on the back end. So anyway, so that's the travel picture, cautiously optimistic. Right now for the BTO, we're in the middle of our big events push season. Lighting, I really want to echo John's comments and really thank all the partners that chipped in on this past weekend. It was amazing and it's a lot of people, including the mayor. Addressed welcoming everybody to Breckenridge, thank you for that. We believe we had a record crowd out there, we don't exactly know, but we did have drones in the air, those were our drones. We'll have some great footage for next year, but it was a lot of fun and everything went as well as we could hope. This week, Uler is Uler Week, Uler Fest, King and Queen will get crowned this Thursday at three o'clock, Riverwalk Plaza. Shot ski is sold out, we're shooting for fourteen hundred and one people in the shot ski, so we clipped Park City's record, so that's what we've sold. So thank you for the distillery, we, we manage that, you know, very carefully, don't want too much in one year. The parade will start at four, that's thirty minutes earlier than normal, just so we can get the whole thing done while it's still daylight and we can see all the grape floats. And then the bonfire is five to seven. The cool, it's all cool, but the coolest thing I think that's happening this year with Uler Fest, and I think I touched on it last time we did an update here. Is the ski resort and BTO, we're co-hosting a pretty important fam. We have five. Media coming in and four highly regarded influencers for the Uler Parade. And this is really driven by the ski resort and their focus is on really showing the connection between the mountain and town. And they think Uler is a perfect way to do that, plus really catch the vibe of the town, so. I think huge kudos to Melissa from our team and Sarah LaCoco from the resort. I think that one's going to have big dividends for the community. We finished that one up and then we're rolling right into snow sculpture, Jan thirteen to twenty-nine, twelve teams, everything will be. Pretty much as you're accustomed to seeing it, with the exception of moving the awards ceremony to Breck Theater, we just want. You know, a venue that fits the size of the audience a little better, so it feels better in there. So everything's in place, everything looks good, our office is filling up with boxes, if you walk by the windows, pretty soon you won't be able to see in at all. And we're good to go and when that's done, you won't see Majer or Sarah for a while, which is all good. Last thing. Thanks to, well, we'll talk about Tourism Day at the Capitol, so thanks to great support from. Speaker McCluskey and Senator Dillon today. They gave us some good input for doing Tourism Day at the Capitol, which hasn't been done for a few years. This will be run by CADMO and that will be, it's an educational event for legislators to really, you know, do some advocacy work. For tourism, you know, after listening to the speaker talk about the billion dollar deficit that the state's looking at, it's a good time to. Juice tourism and let us bring some more money into the state coffers. So we're planning that one for February fourth. That's what I have. Questions, comments?
Questions for Lucy? Thank you very much, Lucy. All right, moving on to continued business, second reading of council bill, series twenty twenty-four, number, council bill number twenty-seven. A bill for an ordinance approving four long-term leases at the Breck Grand Vacations Community Center.
Mayor Owens and town council, before you is an ordinance approving four long-term leases at the Breckenridge Grand Vacations Community Center. This is the second reading, so we have discussed it once before. It is for four different nonprofit entities that will take spaces, commercial spaces within the, the community center. Happy to answer any questions, there have been no changes since the first reading.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions for Scott? Any comments from the public on council bill? Number twenty-seven, series twenty twenty-four. Can I have a motion?
I move, we pass council bill number twenty-seven, series twenty twenty-four, the title of which the mayor read in the record.
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call, please Helen.
Council member Rankin.
Yes.
Council member Carlton.
Yes.
Council member Beckerman.
Yes.
Council member Page.
Yes.
Council member Sade.
Yes.
Council member Gerard.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right, into new business, first reading of council bills, series twenty twenty-four, council bill number twenty-eight, an ordinance approving a lease of the Gaiman's Cabin to Summit County Telecommunications Consortium.
Mayor Owens and town council before you is a first. The, of a lease, an ordinance approving a lease for the Summit County Telecommunications Consortium within the Gaiman Cabin, which is three oh nine North Main Street. This is similar to the other ones in that we are revitalizing a space that has been vacated by Breck History a few years ago. And we are approving a ten-year lease for, with the terms that were agreed upon, you know, within, within the lease itself, so. This is the first reading, so happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Scott. Any questions for Scott?
Scott, on the three-year renewals, are those a town option or a tenant option?
And they're approved through this where the tenant opts into those.
Thanks for that clarification. Any comments from the public on council bill number twenty-eight? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move, we pass council bill number twenty-eight, series twenty twenty-four, the title of which has been read into the record.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please Helen.
Council member Beckerman.
Yes.
Council member Page.
Yes.
Council member Gerard.
Yes.
Council member Sade.
Yes.
Council member Rankin.
Yes.
Council member Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right, into resolutions, resolution number twenty-two, series twenty twenty-four, a resolution adopting the twenty twenty-four final supplemental budget appropriation for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty-four. And ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Tracy.
Aaron Council, Tracy Lambert, Senior Accountant for the Record. I'm here to request approval for the final twenty twenty-four budget appropriations. The packet details out the implicated funds and the financial impact to the town.
Thank you, Tracy. Any questions? Any comments from the public on resolution number twenty-two? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move, we pass resolution number twenty-two, series twenty twenty-four, the title of which has been read into the record.
Second.
Any final discussion? Any final discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Yes. Council member Rankin.
Yes.
Council member Page.
Yes.
Council member Carlton.
Yes.
Council member Gerard.
Yes.
Council member Beckerman.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right, moving on to planning matters, planning commission decisions. Anything to discuss there? Report of the town manager and staff.
I don't have anything to know.
All right, report of the mayor and council members. Um, cast MMC. We did have MMC. I did not come prepared for this.
We spent, we talked about the XL injection site.
Oh.
Um, home size and geothermal.
Yeah, there was a lot of interest countywide with both the geothermal feasibility study as well as, um. We spent a very long time talking about how expensive a, a new pipeline for XL would be, you know, to the tune of fifty to seventy million dollars. And how really to make an impact to reduce our um requirement for natural gas, we would have to go countywide. Um, so everybody, I was actually. Very pleasantly surprised with how that conversation went. Um, I think there is. A lot of understanding about the issues and that this is not just a Breckenridge issue. Um, while we are in a good position to affect. The gas, I guess, I don't know. Pressure. Because, the, because of our location, we have the most of impact on the gas pressure at the very end of the line where we're receiving it. Um, but countywide, I think there was a lot of interest in what we're doing and maybe they'll join in. So. Um, that conversation I thought went really well, surprisingly well.
And then, um, some discussion about working together on sustainability.
Mm hmm.
Um, kind of forming a work group.
Yeah.
Some work countywide on that, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, we're just incredibly lucky with our sustainability crew. Um, not only that we have great people, but also. Um, that they can really see the big picture and um that we have funding to move things forward. Not all the towns in the county feel like they have that same amount of forward momentum. And so there's a bit of interest, um, which I think is really exciting because so much of what we do is the same or there is overlap. So there's not. Really need to be doing study after study after study in each, you know, in each town in our community. So. Um, I think it'd be great if we had the opportunity to share some of our information and get information from others. And so there is gonna be a working group. Um, that we'll be a part of and everybody else will. Provide someone as well. So I think that could really be a good move for this community. Thank you for feeding me all of our talking points.
We kind of took over that meeting a little bit, so.
We did. It was really about Breckenridge and what we were doing. Um, all right, open space advisory. Uh, we already had the tourism office, but do you have anything done?
I, we did have a meeting, so I have a few other things other than. Just reemphasize the influencers coming to U- Uler is, uh, it's huge. It's, um. I mean, they're big names, Westward, Outside, Matador, Thrillist. I mean, it's, it's big names, so it's, that, that's really exciting and. And Bellwether, the um consultant we're using for the website, their little website update was here for the lighting. So that really gave them a feel for. For uh what our town was. Um. Had a projections on the year-end financials and they're looking very favorable, so um, that's a real positive. It's great. Um, planning our twenty twenty-six planning meeting for this spring, we plan way out, so, um. Uh, so that, uh, you know, we're gonna take a hard look at AI opportunities and considerations. Um. You know, what are we gonna look like in the next five to ten years? Um, do we, are we gonna need to go to a more year-round market? These are all the questions we'll be asking. You know, I, what percentage of the management piece and, and uh, you know, are we um gonna be? So that, that was good. Um, Lucy touched on the tourism day. Um, international skull sculpt, snow sculpture, we have twelve teams. Toyota's gonna, they're back in for the primary sponsor. Um, should be a great one. They, Lucy really, um. Shouted out Scott Jackman in the ski resort, um, and, and how helpful. You know, town, Scott and his team and Public Works is to this event and as well as the ski area and, and their snowmaking team and such. Um, you know, the whole mountain to Main Street piece, Sarah, um, the PR person from the ski area is just so collaborative right now. It's, it's really great and how well the ski area and, and uh BTO are working together. It's awesome. Um. That's. Key data she touched on. Yeah, that's, that's pretty much it. It's good. It's a good meeting. It's an solid meeting.
It's a great update. Those are big names. All right, Breck History.
We meet in January.
Breck Creative Arts.
Breck Creative is holding its annual meeting on Friday, December twentieth, which will coincide with the opening of the winter exhibition downtown. They had fourteen hundred people attend the uh open market during the lighting of Breckenridge Day of Ceremonies. So that's a ton of exposure. And they are looking at only four musical events booked for next year at this point in time.
All right, good to know. Thank you. Um, CMO.
We meet on Friday.
Social Equity.
Meet on Monday.
Arts and Cultural Master Plan. All right, the real. Um, okay, other matters. For crickets. All right, I'll, I'll say mine then. Um, I just am really grateful that I get to work with all of you guys, but um. Mostly, I'm incredibly grateful that we have the town staff that we do and the leadership that we do for the town staff. You guys do amazing things as evidenced with, by a very wonderful year and it's, um. I hope that you guys all have an event for you this holiday season that was like the lighting for me that makes you be like, ah, that's why I live here. And that's why I'm part of this community and I was really proud and I'm very grateful that, to everybody who pulled that off and gives us that nice little reminder going into the busy holiday season, so. Happy holidays to everyone.
Well said.
Anything else? For the good of the order? All right, see you in the new year. Meeting adjourned.